Is a big giant and you can't eat a giant hole. You just say this.
Right, how do you know?
Yeah. But yeah, it's uh, it's interesting.
Okay.
Yes.
You can slide it under my table.
Ooh, these are real, real cool.
Oh, that's cool.
Yeah, this is cool. In the, in the paper? Oh, mine is over mine in ninety-five. Hey, where's the bounty?
Yeah, I got them.
I got them. We forgot them. We left them at the central office.
I don't need any, I got water.
We're gonna run down there and get some.
Yeah.
I'm sorry, I'm trying to look down. They're all in this cold.
No tomatoes?
No onion.
Okay.
You want water?
I'm good, I got it right here. I'll take another water though, yes. Thank you, sir. So she's gonna get her story together.
Oh, I don't have it yet. He's gonna, uh, oh.
Text it to you?
Yeah, yeah.
Or email it to you. So she's good to go. And then I'll get us all the other stuff.
Okay.
Yeah. Okay, perfect, take it. Oh, he hits you.
I didn't want to let us do it.
I'm good. How are you?
All right, good to see you.
Got more ones?
I got some for my work. They, Doc, Doc Bowser said he has a minute. I think we're just, okay. It's not, I think, it's this. No. Your alcohol? Yeah. Whenever he gets here, just let him roll.
Dr. Moore. Hell, hell, listen.
That's my request.
Doc, let me hold on to these sandwiches. We don't have a mic stand. Can I have to hand the mic to people?
It's crazy, it's like a...
Coming through the door?
Okay. Do me a big pass in the gym if you don't mind. Thank you. How are you? What, Coach? What, Coach?
You came in.
Hi, yeah, okay. Okay. Thank you. Hey, Coach?
Hey, Doc.
Come on. You doing all right?
How's it going?
It's good.
Go to the right.
It'll be easier. Y'all take them all the way down, you'll see my bag.
Hey, what's going on?
You'll walk them down all the way to the front. I must have the mic this way, 'cause we don't have a stand.
Hmm.
I must have the mic this way, we don't have a stand.
Well, we had another camera, but I didn't see another stand over there. That's why. I thought y'all had one for that.
That's right.
Okay.
Basically.
Okay.
Police station, police reporting.
I think so. 'Cause I got your check, man. I got your check, man. Okay. I said she had seen you.
She had a little sore.
Oh, I think so. I'm gonna try to get it straight.
Before, before we get started tonight, I've, I've asked Jana Bailey to offer a devotional moment for us. Red light's on. Okay, is it on? I'm, I'm real loud anyway, so. Um, I wanna say that this is a very historical night in Montgomery Public Schools history. Glad to see all of you out and glad to be here. I'm gonna read a quote from Michelle Obama. I thought it was very timely for what we're doing, not just for E- MPS, but all of the struggles and world changes that are going on right now, not only in the world, but in our community. And, um, these were just encouraging words to me. You may not always have a comfortable life, and you will not always be able to solve all the world's problems all at once, but don't ever underestimate the impact you can have, because history has shown us that courage can be contagious and hope can take on a life of its own. Thanks. Thank you. At this point, I would like to call this meeting to order and start by saying, "Good evening." I, I'm thrilled to once again be in the same room with all of you tonight. It's been more than a hundred days since we last were able to convene as a body. And even though tonight's meeting looks very different from the last time we were together, it warms my heart that we are assembling once again, and, and thank you for joining us. Uh, to begin this meeting, I would like to invite Devona Sims from Continental Societies, Inc., Montgomery Chapter, to the microphone to make an important announcement.
Madam President, would you approve the agenda or did I miss?
Um, order. Okay, we, we have a quorum. I see. All right, I'll ask, Devona, give us just a minute for approval of the, uh, agen- of the agenda.
I, I move that we, you know, we lose. I own an area consent agenda on the second count and consider for approval.
Okay. With that amendment, do we have a motion to accept the, uh, agenda?
I move that we accept the agenda with the, um, with removing A, under consent agenda, under number nine, under considered for approval.
I second. All in favor, please show with a show of hands. Okay, now, Devona.
Thank you, Madam President. Is the microphone in here or in the studio? Uh, I am the goddess and president of the Montgomery County Council of Representatives. We are not on a congregation, we're, we're a team of youth throughout the modern political system. Tonight, I am here to award three scholarships, two from Brew Tech, and a PPK. Thank you. And, right, so the first recipient will be this tiger flying thing. The next recipient is Mr. Rashawn Devon Montreux. And last but not least, the next recipient is Mr. Warren Warren.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. I love to see good deeds and scholarship rewarded. Thanks, Devona. Uh, I'd now like to call on Senator David Burkett to come down for a presentation.
Good afternoon, everyone. I would've got up here much sooner, but the sign said, "No running in the jail, no running in the United States." Yeah, I am here under the head of the Alabama State Senate, District Montgomery, not District Twenty-Six, but District Montgomery. I am here to present a check, are y'all ready for this? I'm here to present a check in about, uh, one thousand, one hundred and eight thousand, three hundred eighty-one dollars and fifty-seven cents. So, on behalf of the Alabama State Senate, I really appreciate the attendance here, and let's get on with this most important meeting that we have. Thank you, Dr. Moore. Uh, y'all holding that check? Yes, ma'am.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Can't we hand that over right here?
That was what? Okay, Doc.
Dr. Moore, can we ask, is that designated for anything particular? Senator?
Uh, yes, ma'am. It's designated for MPS at that discretion.
All right.
Thank you.
No racing down the hall, Senator Burkett. Uh, in following my tradition of, uh, having positive news, I have a couple to pass on tonight that I'm very excited about. As you may have already heard, the Jeff Davis High School marching band appears tonight on America's Got Talent at seven o'clock. Uh, my DVR is set. I'm hopeful, though, that we'll get home in time to see tonight's proceedings with plenty of time and see it live, I hope. I'm also pleased to share that Shanice Spicer of Brew Tech High School was named the Gatorade Girls' Track and Field Athlete of the Year for Alabama. This award makes Shanice a finalist for the national award. She has a long string of victories at state meets and holds the state record in the one hundred and two hundred meters. Not only is she a stellar athlete, but she is also excels in the classroom, where she maintains a four-point-two-one GPA. Congratulations to Shanice. We are proud of you and rooting for you. Her coach is here. Coach Bowen, please stand up, 'cause we wanna say thank you and pass this good news message along for us. And lastly, before we begin our discussion, uh, items, I would like to take a minute to share a few thoughts on the journey this board has taken over the last nineteen months. It is a pleasure to work with the ladies sitting on this stage. They are all great minds focused on giving the children of Montgomery County the best education possible. I'm fortunate to serve with you. As a reminder, together, we have gotten our finances in order and helped state auditors find and correct inconsistencies in our books. We've uncovered financial crimes, and those responsible have been prosecuted and no longer work for our system. We have managed to rein in our maintenance issues and save money during the process. We've purchased a new school for BTW, new building. We have become fully accredited. State intervention will soon end, and more importantly, our students' academic outcomes are improving. It's hard to believe how far we have come in such a short period. I would be kidding myself and you if I were to sit here and tell you that our work is finished. There is still a great deal left to do. Still, I remain an optimist and believe that the last two years were just the beginning of what this board can accomplish. To this end, I would like to bring to your attention two items on our agenda tonight. Both allow us to correct some of the wrongs that have permeated our system for far too long. The first involves the renaming of three schools. No student should feel undervalued at MPS because of their race, religion, or national origin. We must provide a warm and welcoming atmosphere so that our students know and believe that they matter. We have not always done our best in this area, especially for our black students. This is evident in our failure to address the message the names of our schools send to our overwhelming majority of students and teachers walking through the doors. Today, we are po- poised to begin a healing process by activating a committee to study and recommend new names. However, what the schools are named will mean little if we do not continue the strides we are making inside our classrooms. That begins with writing the funding inequities handicapping the progress. Our schools are currently operating on the lowest amount of local funds allowed by state law. That is unacceptable and must change. Dr. Moore will ask this body tonight to consider a resolution officially requesting that the Montgomery County Commission add an amendment to the November third ballot, increasing the ad lorum taxes to more adequately fund our schools. It has been nearly thirty years since Montgomery was allowed to vote on school funding. This move is long overdue and desperately needed. I'm grateful for the long hours and leadership the women on this stage have put into getting us to this point. We would not be able to take this step without the hard work and vision. Ladies, we have a chance tonight to change Montgomery's course by putting us on a path to adequately fund our schools, and with it, invite an increased level of expectation that has been missing for a long time. For those who believe funding can make a real difference, it is our duty to voice what is possible. I hope everyone listening will join our cause because, because it is in everyone's interest to move forward together. And with that, I yield the floor to Dr. Moore to talk about a resolution, I believe. Nope, 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 we got comments, uh, from the public coming up first. And we have seven people who have signed up, and then we have, we'll have citizens' comments. Let me just remind you, when you come to the microphone, you'll have three minutes. When that time is up, you need to relinquish. We're not gonna talk about anybody personally. If your comments get out of line, you'll be asked to leave or escorted out. So we'll start our comments with Tanya Benefield, speaking about Lanier High School.
I'm a little too short. Before I get started, y'all should've gotten a handout that we left for y'all that has a little bit about what we're all talking about tonight. Did y'all get the book, Leslie had it?
We got it.
Yes. I would like to thank each of y'all for allowing us to speak about the changing of the name of Sidney Lanier High. First, let me say, most of the along line are not for the changing. There's been so many great people who have graduated from Lanier, to name a few. Silver White's pioneer, Arlen Carr, graduated in sixty-eight. Richard Flowers, formerly of the Dallas Cowboys, class of sixty-five. Brian Bartlett Star, Bart Starr, he played for Alabama football, went on to play for the Cat- Dallas Cowboys, class of fifty-eight. John Cochrane was a reporter and ABC News correspondent, class of seventy-two. Tony Tenille of the famous Captain Tenille's, class of fifty-eight. Catherine Cordial Thornton became an astronaut in eighty-five, class of seventy. I could spend the whole time listing many names that graduated from Lanier, but that's not why we're here. Yes, there's a lot of stories about Sidney Lanier, but what you're not hearing is that he was a musician, he was a teacher, a poet, a novelist, he was a lawyer. Yes, he served in the Civil, Civil War like most young men back then. And if I'm getting it turned around, I'm sorry, I'm a little nervous. But can you judge him by one thing he did in his life? No. We cannot judge anybody by one act that they did whenever it wasn't so bad, because he was not even, really, a foot soldier, he was a musician. Now that you know a little bit about him, I wanna address some of the things that's happening today. First, you can change, burn all the history books, you can change what they say, you can take down all the statues, you can change all the names, but this will not change history. History is the past. We must take the past and learn from it and move forward to build a better future. From the past, we learned what was good and what was bad, without the good... Without the good, we don't know what was bad. Vice versa, without the bad, we don't know what was good. Jesus said it best, "He without sin cast the first stone." I'm here to tell you, I cast no stones. I know some of the US history is bad, but not all of it. In 1933, there was books that was banned and burned by the Nazis because they were deemed unfit and un-German. The United States fought along British and French and other countries to stop the Nazis. This was good history. So we have to learn from that, good history along with the bad. When all this started, I took a walk down memory lane. I remember the good and the bad about Lanier and a school my grandfather helped build. It wasn't all good, I hated the bad. But you cannot learn without knowing both, good and bad. Together, we take that, we teach our children and grandchildren what was done right and what was done wrong. So that they don't make the same mistakes.
Ms. Benefield, the time is up. Thank you very much. Dwayne Ferrier, speaking about Robert E. Lee.
Good afternoon. Um, my name is Dwayne Ferrier. I'm a 1997 graduate of 225 Ann Street. I refer to it simply by his address because I stopped referring to it by the school's name approximately about five to six years ago. Um, I have a question that's really simple to me and that's what's in a name? I am the youngest nephew of the murdered sheriff, John Williams, who was beloved by everyone in his community. Um, you pick it, white, black, brown, green, yellow, you pick it. For me personally, if it cannot be an inspiration for all, I'll repeat that, if it cannot be an inspiration for all, then why do we have the name on the building? I am proud to say that I graduated from 225 Ann Street because of my friends, the relationships I built, but to use it by the name and badge myself with someone who I know led the war to fight to keep my ancestors, and I don't even have to say my ancestors, because some may say I'm not affected by it. Well, let me correct you. My mom's 82. Yeah, my mom's 82. She was 41 when she had me. So that means if you think about her mom and her dad who were born in 1900, her grandparents who were born in the 1800s, I'm only three generations removed. So, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Jane Powell.
First of all, I would like to say thank you for letting me speak to you today. My name is Jane Powell Brown. I retired as a programmer analyst in 2018 after spending over 30 years in technology. I have never spoken out for anything in my life before, for this because it is so close to my heart. I could not sit by and let it happen without voicing my opinion. In 1968, I walked into Sidney Lanier, the castle, a scared 15-year-old little girl. Standing here today, I am much, much older, but still a little scared. I didn't know much about the school when I entered it, except it was big. In doing research for this meeting, I found out a few interesting facts. It was designed by Frederick Osfield, whose descendants would later attend and graduate. It was built in the late Gothic Revival architecture and it was called the Million Dollar School due to the approximate cost and had a floor space of 172,000 square feet. The contractor was Algernon Blair and consultants from Columbia University was brought in to ensure the building had all the latest educational innovations and requirements. The school opened for class in September 1929. In 1928, the school's name was decided over a football game. I could not find one article that stated it was being named after Sidney Lanier due to the fact that he was served in the Confederate Army. Alumni are devoted to Lanier and still feel a connection by donating and volunteering. $10,000 for the new digital marquee for the athletic department, around $7,000 from the class of 1969 to the band department, donations to replace the historical marker in 2013, along with other donations and volunteering at the Clean Up the Castle events. Generations have walked these hallowed halls. If you read the comments on the petition page, you can see that that is a reason given most for signing. Sisters, brothers, mothers, fathers, grandfathers, and grandmothers all attended. Lanier is part of their history and mine. My mother attended Lanier, my brother graduated in 64, my sister in 69, and I am proud to say I'm the class of 1971. You cannot change history and you shouldn't try. My mom always taught me to be a leader, not a follower, and that is what I ask of you today. Do what's right, not what the climate is telling you to do. In closing, I would like to say, please vote no on changing Sidney Lanier's name and prove once more that the pen is mightier than the sword.
Thank you. Marika Blair.
Good evening. By instruction of a former teacher at Lee High School, I learned to value opposing opinions, but also to stand strong and confidently in my position. I respected the passion and commitment of my instructor, and even when we had opposing opinions, we agreed to disagree. But as James Baldwin said, "We can disagree and still love each other unless your disagreement is rooted in my oppression and the denial of my humanity and right to exist." Since my time at Lee High School, I've compromised on a lot of things, and I'm sure I will compromise on a lot more in the years to come, but I will not compromise on the moralization of racism, hate, and bigotry. During my years at Lee High School, I learned a lot of lessons, but what I did not learn was that a building that I occupied to earn education and the statue I walked past daily was erected to honor a man whose legacy included the ideals of inhumanity against black people. To some, Robert E. Lee was known as a courageous leader of the Confederate military, but we should not forget that he led a battle and waged war on fellow Americans to maintain the enslavement of black people, and that when he had the opportunity to free the enslaved people he inherited, he denied their freedom. As I stand here today, I'm reminded that even after the South's defeat in the Civil War, Lee did not support the rights of black citizens, and if we operated on the ideals of Lee and those who support his ideals, I wouldn't be here. Martin Luther King Jr. said, "Freedom is never voluntarily given by the oppressor; it must be demanded by the oppressed." Therefore, I stand in remembrance of Wesley and Mary Norris, two enslaved people who attempted to break free of Lee's bondage. When they were caught, they were sent back to Lee's captivity, and he vows to teach them a lesson they will never forget. The overseer was ordered by Lee to tie them firmly to a post, strip them to their bare skin, and whip them hard. Then after, wash their wounds with salt water. It's no secret that MPS has challenges beyond the exterior, and we have a lot of work to do to change the interior infrastructure of our school. Our kids are still being forced to walk around with clouds of inferiority forming in their mental skies. Our kids deserve better. They need better. We cannot move forward without confronting the infrastructures that were built as a statement of white supremacy. We cannot move forward by memorializing the history of the falsity of black inferiority. We cannot move forward by allowing those who are not serving all of our students in any capacity in our system. MPS, I'm calling on you to stand against the legacy of white supremacy and permanently remove the statue and change the name of Robert E. Lee High School. Thank you.[1189.83][1189.83](applause)
Helen Cersey.
Good evening and thank you for Montgomery County Board of Education and Superintendent Dr. Moore for letting me address the subject of the name of Sidney Lanier High School. I am Helen Cersey Barnett, and I'm a lifelong resident of our city, a product of MPS, grades 1 through 12, a graduate of Lanier, and I'm a proud retired MPS teacher of 35 years at McIntyre, Lovelace, Fitzpatrick, TS Morris, and Edie Nixon. I have many former students who have attended Lanier, so of course, any subject dealing with this is very special to me. As the board considers this issue of a name change to Lanier High School, I respectfully ask that you examine the facts. Sidney Lanier was not a soldier. He was a flutist in the band. He was a buck private, he was not a military leader. He was captured and held captive in Richmond. While in the POW camp, he contracted tuberculosis, and he lived for about a year in Montgomery. A misconception is that when the poet, that he is the poet of the Confederacy. This is not so. He did not begin writing until after he returned from the war, so perhaps he was the poet of Reconstruction. In his short life, Lanier wrote over 100 poems, several lectures, musical compositions for the flute, and one novel during his lifetime. While in Baltimore, he studied at John Hopkins University and became a lecturer and faculty member. Thus, the reason Lanier students, alumni, band, and sports teams have always been known as the poets, and our school motto has been, "The pen is mightier than the sword." Another source of pride to all poets is that one time Lanier not only had consistent state championship football teams, but also one of the highest number of National Merit Scholarship finalists in the state. It was also the original site of the Lamp Advanced Academic Magnet School. Therefore, I ask you to please consider that Sidney Lanier was honored for his broad body of literary work as a musician and as a scholar, not for his brief period as a buck private and flute player in the Confederate band. The name Sidney Lanier School has always and continues to stand for scholarship, knowledge, tradition, and excellence. Whatever the outcome of this issue is to be, as a lifetime educator and Lanier alumni, I pray that our city is not about the business of erasing a rich legacy of excellence only because Lanier unfortunately has gotten caught up in the fervor over the two other high school names. I also continue to pray that in our beloved city, that the pen of knowledge remains mightier than the sword. Thank you.[1363.53][1363.53](applause)
Thank you. Next, we'll hear from Rebecca Seun.
Thank you to the board for allowing me to speak tonight. I appreciate the opportunity. My name is Rebecca Song Bickley, and I'm a Lamp alum, class of 2003, and I went through all the magnets, so Forest Avenue, Baldwin, and then Lamp, and my son is about to start his second year at Dalreada. I asked to speak tonight to present a sign-on letter that some of the Lamp alumni wrote and have been circulating for the past week in response to the Montgomery Advertiser article that detailed various incidents that have happened at Lamp over the years. In this letter, we've asked the board to create a task force to address the equity, diversity, and inclusion issues that were raised in the article and are hoping to focus not only on Lamp but on MPS more broadly. We also asked for this task force to include explicitly alumni of color from MPS. I printed a copy of the letter for you with the signatures we have so far. We also collected comments which I've included, I won't read them tonight, but I've included them for you to read later, and I have not cherry picked them, so they are all of the comments that we have gotten that we have permission to share with you. So far, we've collected over 150 signatures, which includes alumni, parents, and faculty from the following schools: Bear, Blunt, Carver, Dalreada, Danley, Dozier, Forest Avenue, Head, Bellingrath, Baldwin, Carr, Floyd, Goodwin, Lamp, Lanier, Lee, Jefferson Davis, Rebecca Tech, and BTW. We also received support from St. James alumni, who also agree that this is an urgent and important issue for the Montgomery community to address. While this does not represent every school in MPS, it does include a fair number of them, and we believe as alumni of these schools that we can provide a perspective to the board having had firsthand experiences growing up in MPS. We also hope that through this task force, we can ensure that students are heard, particularly ones who have had negative experiences at an MPS school, whether due to race, gender, religion, sexual orientation, or otherwise. Those voices are ones that must be included in this conversation as we move forward in understanding how to better support future students in similar situations and hopefully prevent such incidents from occurring in the future. I've also reached out to all of you individually to share this letter, and I am grateful for those who have responded with your support for this idea. And I also want to thank the alumni from schools across Montgomery who are dedicating their time and expertise to promote safer and healthier learning environments for students and faculty in Montgomery, and especially with regards to Song Montgomery who are here tonight and have been working with for several weeks now to challenge the names and memorials used in our schools, and which many Lamp alumni stand firmly behind our fellow MPS alumni in asking for this change. I look forward to continuing to get your thoughts on this idea, and I hope to work with you all and with the existing Culture and Climate Committee to ensure that every student in Montgomery has a safe and inclusive environment in which to learn. Thank you.[1563.13][1563.13](applause)
Pamela West.
Good evening. I'm Pamela West. I'm here as a concerned citizen, educator, and the president of the Montgomery County Education Association. We're here, we have great concerns. I'm speaking on behalf of over 1,600 educators. We want the district to know we love and miss our students, and we have a passion for teaching, and we're looking forward to teaching as long as it is done safely. More importantly, we believe in the mission of MPS and the core values of our great district. One in particular is educational equity. I quote, "We value each student as a person and embrace our responsibilities to serve as advocates for each student, encouraging them and ensuring physical, emotional, and intellectual needs are addressed, allowing students to focus fully on their education." We believe, excuse me, we believe as being an advocate for our students, we must set some high standards to ensure we return safely. This evening, I want the board to consider pushing back the start date of school. We believe pushing the start date back will allow the district and educators adequate time to prepare for a safer return to school, allow ample time for the district to collaborate with educators, and have an open dialogue on returning face-to-face or to work remotely, considering those educators who have underlying health conditions, those educators who have young children in the school district, and also working with our community to ensure a safer at-home stay and that we wear masks in the community. Hopefully, by pushing the date back, our coronavirus numbers will decline. Also, an opportunity for parents to get informed and make informed decisions based on a detailed plan from our district and from the individual schools. As an advocate for our students, let's ensure all students, not some schools, all schools, traditional and magnet, have all the equitable treatment and safeguards in place for reopening. All buildings are properly cleaned and sanitized based on CDC guidelines, not our expectations, and properly marked for social distancing outside and inside to ensure the proper distance. Upon entry into the buildings, all members, faculty, staff, students, visitors, temperatures be taken. Every building has adequate sanitizing and hand washing stations. Every classroom have reduced number of students who are spaced six feet apart. All classrooms are equipped with disinfectant wipes, Kleenex, paper towels.
Time is up, ma'am.
That, okay. Can I have privilege to finish?
You can pass it in in writing. We'd be happy to have.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep, thank you. I like classical music, so that's the tone that comes up after the time is up. Next, we have citizens' comments, and is it Adele White? Is that right?
Before I get started, I have a packet here for you all. Who can I give it to? Something for each and every one of you? Okay, thank you. Again, good afternoon. To the county school board, my name is Adele White, cafeteria manager for the special feeding program. Thank you for including us on your agenda today. My staff and I are confident that you will assist us with resolving this matter. Around March 18th or 19th, I received a phone call from my supervisor requesting that I work the COVID-19 feeding program to benefit our food-deprived communities. COVID-19 hit many of our families in a very desperate way because several families were laid off and even lost their jobs due to businesses closing. At the time, I was told I would be making $30 an hour for management and $20 an hour for additional employee. Despite the risk, I thought about our students and decided to assist each day. The two of us prepared 500 meals for breakfast, 500 meals for lunch, sometimes more. This equals to over 1,000 meals per day being prepared by only two people. We were not supplied with masks, so I purchased them myself from my own pocket. Meanwhile, our colleagues, teachers, and other staff were at home and still getting paid without making the sacrifices we did to ensure that our community was fed. This program was just like the supper program and summer program that CNP offers. I'm pretty sure that there were grants sent for this. Although cafeteria workers are on the lower end of the tier of paid faculty and staff, we took the initiative and successfully ran the program seamlessly. This was done under the direction and agreement of how much we would be compensated. Yes.
Ms. White, as much as I would like to continue with this, this, it has to be something on our agenda today, and that is not on our agenda today.
Okay.
So, but please, you've submitted it in writing.
Yes.
We'll take a look and take it into consideration.
Thank you.
Thank you. And there are a number of people that have signed up, and I don't know if they are, if it's not an agenda item, we need to table it. The next person up here is Edwina Ralph, and I would ask if this is concerning an agenda Edwina Ralph?
I wanted to speak on the same thing that she was speaking on, so.
Okay. We'll table that till, to have it written, to have it written, if that's okay. Tanomi Gordon?
She's down here. We also wanted to make sure that copies were shared through her letter that she gave.
So, it's about the same thing. Is it concerning something on the agenda?
Yes, about the safety and reopening of the school for our ESP professionals.
Safety of the opening of the schools. That is on the agenda, so yes, you're up.
It will be brief. It's basically what Mrs. Pamela West talked about. My name is Tanomi Gordon, and I'm the Montgomery County ESP president. And we really are concerned about workers being called back with no guidance, our ESP support professionals, kind of like she said, you know, she had to go to work and take money out of her pocket to buy masks, and we're really concerned about our lunchrooms, our bus drivers, and things of that nature. We don't have a guideline on how we're going to return back safe. We are educational professionals, and we support the teachers. We do all the support, and we do all the cleaning, we, you know, we serve the kids. And so, we need a guideline on how to return to school safely, because if we're going to be working with ESPs, I've opted out not to have my child to come back to school, and not with a good conscience. I can tell other people, hey, send your child to school, because I don't have a guideline. We don't have a guideline to keep our teachers, our ESP members, safe. And so, that's a big concern, and I do think, and I do support the teachers as far as pushing things back to get an outlook, to help the parents understand what's going to be going on, how they can help as far as teaching the kids if they're going to be at home. So, safety for our ESP members are very important, and we don't have that. And so, we're asking you to give yourself time, to give the parents time, to give people time to understand how we're going to do this safely.
Good evening. Hi, I'm here on behalf of the Sidney Lanier Alumni Association, where I serve as the president. I thought it'd be important for me to attend this meeting, and I'd like to publicly thank all of those who have spoke in opposition of changing the name of Sidney Lanier, because I also oppose the changing of the name. This seems to be a knee-jerk reaction and one of deep emotion, and I understand, but let me speak specifically to Lanier, and I'm going to read two excerpts, and I'll be out of your way. The first is, "Liberty, patriotism, and civilization are on their knees before the men of the South, and with clasped hands and straining eyes are begging them to become Christians." These are the words of Sidney Lanier, writing about the men of the South during the Civil War. These were his words, his ideals concerning the men of the South. Ask yourself, as a man of the South during the Civil War and being a conscientious objector, what would happen to you if you didn't serve? And lastly, in the words of Robert Earl Keen, "Sidney Lanier was no kind of rebel and was not remembered as such in his lifetime or after. Instead, he was renowned as a poet and a musician." In the words of Jim Hindley, a 2006 liberal Democratic candidate for US Congress, "Lanier was a Renaissance man, one who attempted to mesh his words with his tunes, music he created on flute, banjo, organ, piano, violin, and guitar." Quite simply put, when you think about our mascot, it invokes no fear, no kind of rage from anyone. As a matter of fact, some of us have had to defend the fact that our mascot was a poet, simply because it's a non-violent mascot. He was a non-violent person. So, again, I understand the sentiment of those who would like to see these names changed because of the sentiment of links to the Confederacy. I get it. But as far as Sidney Lanier is concerned, please consider us individually, if anything, because again, we're poets for a reason. Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I had a fascinating 47-minute phone conversation with 107-year-old former Lanier student and teacher, Ms. Alona Fontaine, this last Thursday, July 9th. Thanks to her niece, Ms. Jan Cap Knight, who graciously provided me with Ms. Fontaine's cell number. I started by her D C myself, stating I was a class of '74 graduate. I further stated that unfortunately, I'd never had her for a class in my four years there, but I'd always known her name and her reputation as a hard teacher. I could tell that pleased her. I went into her lengthy past, starting with being born in 2013 and her family moving to Montgomery from Poplar Bluff in 1929, the same year Lanier first opened. She told me her family arrived in Montgomery on the last day of the previous year. They moved out to the country as her father was to run a demonstrator farm for the International Harvester Company. So, Ms. Fontaine took the school bus into Montgomery at age 16 to start at Cloverdale High School while Lanier was getting finished up. She remembers teaching, graduating from Lanier in 1932, then attended Judson College, finishing in '35. Her final practicing teaching position was at Auburn University, where her brother Paul Gillespie was an ROTC. Her first teaching position in Montgomery was a substitute teacher for Mrs. Bell at Bellengrath in the fall of '58, which is also the year she got married. In '59, she began a 22-year teaching career, teaching geometry and algebra, and she fell in love with Lanier all over again. She did want to tell me about a principal at Lanier when she began teaching there. She said, "The single fellow," I never got a name, "was very strict, yet he instilled a lot of traditions the teachers there loved, especially the Christmas tea party, which was held annually during his tenure." One of the things she really wanted to drive home to me was that Lanier was a good, clean school, which stressed hard work and academic excellence. They stressed the beauty of education, and particularly stressed math and English as the foundation of education. She stated when she graduated with a degree from Lanier, she did not have to take a college entrance exam because of the quality of education at Lanier. She wanted to share a short story about how men were in short supply during World War II, when she was teaching at a school in London, Alabama. One day, the principal of the school came up to her and informed her that the school had lost the football coach to the war effort, and she was the new football coach.
Time is up, Mr. Pickering.
Okay.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you.
Next, we have Nicole Talbert and Yolanda Nobles together. Again, I would ask, is this concerning something on the agenda?
Yes, ma'am.
Okay.
I would like to thank you for allowing me to speak. As an elementary classroom teacher, I recently visited my classroom trying to envision what instruction would look like this upcoming year. The one thing that was missing besides my precious students was my small group table. I am wondering how am I going to be able to meet the needs of all of my students without the materials that I need to do it safely? If you're not considering changing the start of school, is there any way we can look at having a hybrid option?
Good evening. Yolanda Nobles, also with Alabama Education Association. Just like the president asks, pushing schools back, I am a special education self-contained teacher, and meeting the needs of my students are my concern. I teach non-verbal students. They have to be changed. They have toiletto needs. Just asking you time for us to meet with our special education team at Bellinger Hill so we can get some of these things, we can work on some of these things so that we can be safe and we can meet the unique needs of our students. Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to greet you this afternoon. I have four reasons for being here, and I'll make them very brief. Number one, to let all of you all know on this board that I am constantly, continuously praying for each and every one of you. I want you to know that you've been dealt a hand that you're not, that you're neither educated for and neither are you trained for. I don't say that derogatorily, and I don't say that condescending. I say that because you have been given the charge to lead this community through a pandemic like the world has never seen. So, I don't say that condescending. I pray God will minister to each and every one of your heart and that he will truly give you guidance and holy boldness that you will stand up in this hour. The second thing, I come to lodge a complaint. At the same time, enlarging a complaint, I also, my granddaddy has always said to me that if you're going to lodge a complaint, then you also have to have some tentative solution. So, my complaint is, in my heart, I honestly believe that it's too early for our children to go back to school. In saying that, I would also say, a tentative solution. I don't know what your decision is going to be, but a tentative solution, and I pray that you would consider pushing the opening date back from August the 10th to January the 1st. That would give our leaders and our health authorities more time to look into where at that point, most of them seem to think that we may have some solution to this pandemic by 2029. So, I would that you would at least consider moving the start date back to January the 1st, having a six-month, a six-month school term from January the 1st to June the 30th. And then, I would that you would also take the opportunity to look around us and see what we are so richly blessed with. We have in this community universities that have young people, young minds, that are studying to be future educators. I would that you would look into partnering with these universities and maybe coming with an incentive program. A way of encouragement. Think out of the box. Think out of the box. If we do go to Mars, if we do go to the moon, how will we educate our children there if we cannot do it in a classroom setting? Thank you. Good evening.
The next person up, I'm not sure, Rebecca. Has she already spoken, Bickley?
Yes.
Yes, already spoken, okay. Lindsay Shelton. Again, this would be something on the agenda for tonight.
Good evening, members of the school board. My name is Lindsay Shelton. My pronouns are she/her's. I've lived in Montgomery for a little over three years now. I'm an Alabama native who moved out of state for several years but came back to live in Montgomery because of the opportunities this city offers me. Most of my people are originally from North Alabama. I'm the great, 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 great-granddaughter of George D. Shelton. He served as a captain in the Confederate Army and went on to serve as sheriff of Blunt County. Local newspapers called him one of Blunt's oldest and most influential citizens upon his death and commended him. his death and commended his service to the Confederacy. His legacy and the trajectory of my family were largely defined by the decision he made to fight to continue the enslavement of human beings. You've likely heard or will hear from descendants of Confederates who will say that permanently removing Confederate statues and renaming schools disrespects our Confederate ancestors. As a person whose family's legacy has been in part defined by my ancestors' choice to fight for the Confederacy, I will take every opportunity I can to actively work for the removal of Confederate iconography and symbols in public spaces, especially schools. I'm asking you tonight specifically to rename Lee, Jefferson, Davis, and Lanier schools and permanently remove the statue of Lee and its pedestal at Lee High. The preservation of these monuments is not the preservation of our history. It is the preservation of the legacy of white supremacy that sustained slavery and continues to deprive Black and Indigenous peoples of the respect and dignity they deserve. These symbols actively harm children and educators, particularly Black children and educators at schools. The harm to Black students and to Black educators that has been inflicted for decades at MPS cannot be undone to those whose diplomas and careers are under the banner of a Confederate for a lifetime. Renaming these schools does not erase history, and it does not diminish the literary work of Sidney Lanier. And to answer an earlier question, yes, you can in fact enjudge a person on a single decision they made. Especially when that decision was to voluntarily serve for the Confederacy, Sidney Lanier was certainly not playing that flute for the liberation of Black people. The harm to Black students and Black educators that MPS has inflicted for decades can't be undone for those whose diplomas and careers will bear the name of Robert E. Lee, Sidney Lanier, and other Confederates for a lifetime. But tonight, you can make the decision to end this school district's symbolic violence against Black children and begin the process of trying to repair the harm. By not removing the Lee statue and its pedestal, and by continuing to permit its schools to be named for famous Confederates and white supremacists, MPS is endorsing symbols that have always represented the oppression of Black and Indigenous peoples. My family's legacy will always be partially defined by my ancestors' decision to fight for white supremacy, and I stand here before you carrying the weight of that legacy, not just as a Confederate descendant, but as a person who believes it is the duty of all of us to work to liberate ourselves and our people from systems that harm and oppress them. I hope that generations from now, your descendants can stand with pride and talk about the decisions that you made to stand with your students, the alumni of Montgomery Public Schools, and with your community to help dismantle white supremacy in schools and help liberate our children from the systems that harm and oppress them. Thank you.
Hi, my name is Kayla Vincent, and I'm a former public school history teacher. I am four generations removed from American slavery. My parents attended segregated schools for the entirety of their K-12 career, with the exception of my mother's senior year. I am the first generation of my family to begin my schooltime in integrated public schools. There are several alumni and other people affiliated with Lanier from several decades ago mostly, who tonight ask you to draw lines that distinguish Sidney Lanier from Robert E. Lee and Jefferson Davis. They want it to not matter, they want it to matter that he was not a leader of the Confederacy, but merely a man who supported it. They want you to ignore that Lanier is widely considered a Confederate figure across the South and that fifteen schools have been named after him. But the truth is, even if there are distinctions between Lee, Davis, and Lanier, which I personally do not think there are, that is not what this conversation tonight is about. Tonight's conversation is about the community of Montgomery and how that community in the 1960s and the 1970s used these schools with these names to reinforce a belief, a dangerous and false belief, that white children deserve separate, better-resourced schools and school programs than Black children and all children of color. The Brown versus Board Education declared an end to segregated schools in nineteen fifty-four. For an entire decade, the community of Montgomery disregarded the constitutional rights of Black children and kept Lanier as an all-white school. And in nineteen fifty-five, the community of Montgomery again ignored the constitutional rights of Black children when it founded Robert E. Lee as an all-white school in defiance of federal law. It took the Civil Rights Act of nineteen sixty-four. It took a second local case argued by a Montgomery native who we ought to be honoring, attorney Fred Gray, for the community of Montgomery to desegregate Lee and Lanier, and not because this community decided that segregation was wrong, but because they were finally forced to follow the law. And still, in nineteen sixty-eight, when Jefferson Davis opened, a federal judge ruled that the community of Montgomery had illegally drawn school lines to ensure that Jefferson Davis High, too, would be an all-white school. And when white people who believe in white supremacy could not have Lee, Davis, and Lanier as all-white schools, they left these schools altogether. White parents instead put their kids in segregation academies, private schools that popped up over the South in the 1960s and 70s so that white parents would not have to send their kids to school with Black children. Today, white students make up eight percent of Lee High, one percent of J.D. High, and zero point two percent of Lanier. If the Lanier alums' funding of the school is only tied to the name, we ought to question what it is they are funding. It is these schools, these three named after Confederate soldiers, that were used to maintain white supremacy and to deny Black people their constitutional rights. The names of these schools represent a community that believes in segregated schools. The question before the seven of you is, do you? What kind of Montgomery community you support today? One that supports the overwhelming majority of Black children who attend these schools.
When you hear the cello concerto, it's time to stop. Alan Bowen. And again, would ask, this is something on our agenda, yes?
Good evening, everyone. I come speaking on behalf of, as a pastor, as a husband, as a volunteer to this system, as a dad that still has children in this system. I come with just numbers, because when we closed down in March, I believe there was only twenty cases in the state. Today alone, in Montgomery, Alabama, we had ninety-one new cases and two deaths in Montgomery. What's the difference between March and right now, when we shut them down, and now we're talking about sending them back? Is it just funding? We can work funding because those taxpayers' dollars are our taxpayers' dollars. If we need to do something different with that, we will partner with you to make sure that we need to get what we need to get. Second is, consider the nurses. There's one nurse per school in some schools. Some schools are splitting nurses, right? And so, how in the world are you going to ask the nurses to be able to curtail what the doctors in the emergency room really cannot put a handle on? Sports. I love sports. Matter of fact, I'm going out to coach Shanice in a minute to help, I volunteer with this system. When I look at the number of trainers that we have, and you're looking at one trainer per event, how in the world are we going to be able to put a handle on our athletic events? I love sports, but I'm just pleading with you right now because our babies mean so much. The young lady before, she did a wonderful presentation, and the flight, when you look at the demographics of our schools right now, you're talking about statues. Statues belong in museums, if we're going to talk about history. When we talk about the demographics and the flight of these schools, these names do not represent the demographics of the kids that are in these schools, and so that is a state of oppression. And then, I guess, even as a pastor, if I speak on that, we can't meet as a small congregation. How in the world are we going to be able to come into our school system, put our kids in there? If we love them in the church, how can we not love them in the schools? Then last, our coach at Tuskegee, the site of the syphilis, murder, I'll put it like that. Don't allow our kids to be guinea pigs like then. Even if we have a vaccine that's coming in January, guess what? I know that, all I'm asking you to do is at least push it back until we can get a handle on what's going on. If you guys are not meeting in a closed room, in an open setting, in a smaller room, we can't even put that many people. We've got a hundred people in here now. The average school sometimes in the core curriculum subjects have twenty-five to thirty kids in it. So our teachers, I'm high risk. I've had cancer twice in four years, and I deal with sarcoma doses. I'm high risk. Don't put me, as well as my family, in harm's way. Thank you.
And we have Jennifer Felder. All right, well, that will conclude who we have that have signed up to speak. I can turn the cello concerto off. And can I just talk about this a second? This is not an agenda item, but because it's been brought up several times, I'd just like to read you a memorandum of understanding and assessment of civil penalty. This is from the state attorney general. The state of Alabama, by the authority of Attorney General Stephen Marshall, notified the Montgomery County Board of Education, hereafter called the Board, of its intent to file a complaint against the Board as violated the Alabama Memorial Preservation Act of two thousand seventeen. The act provides that memorial school, which is located on public property and has been so situated for twenty or more years, may be renamed, except as provided in one of the sections. Trying to get down to the good stuff here. The Board voted to re... Oh, no, this isn't the one I'm looking for. Would you address this a minute? Because we have done a little work that addresses some of this.
Okay, so without reading it verbatim, you talked about attorney, you talked about attorney general regarding the statute, and the attorney general's opinion is that as a school system, we do not have to put the statute back up, and we don't have to work with the law on that. And if not, we can read, could not be brought up again as a lawsuit. But that's your opinion. I would say.
Regarding the statute. But I wanted you to know that because it has been brought up a couple of times here. And in our receiving of information, we're going to start with Dr. Moore on the resolution calling for special election.
First of all, I want to thank everyone that came here and has the guts to get up and speak about whether they can pass this. I want to do a couple of things, and I'm going to start out with Pamela West. There's a lot of stuff I want to talk about the reality of this. On that, I totally, and the preacher stood up and said, "I don't want to wait until January, but if we could just be virtual." I think in the pandemic, the gentleman just spoke volumes when he said he started twenty months. We have over forty-three hundred of them. You're asking teachers to go back into a classroom. You, Dr. Matthews, made a public statement to the entire public that the string started with a parent. We all know that parents want to go back to work, and what's going to end up happening is they're going to send that time to school. We are all saying that you don't have to have a teacher that has a curriculum too. When we sat around and talked about this, we discussed this, and all of a sudden, because of whatever came out, we made a fair, honest, whatever, this is dangerous. It's dangerous to our teachers. It's dangerous to our principals. It's dangerous to our children. We have children with, we've talked about this so many times, asthma and different things, and we're just going to come back. We can divide what we have and say, "How about this virtual, how about a comeback?" Now, we're going to end up all that in one, that's all I want to say about that. On the other, specifically one of our two members, that was Blankater and Amory Boyer. Both of you called me in, talked over and over. It was a fast call, and I fought, cried. And she stood up here today, I knew the teacher, but she was aggressive, and said, "I had to teach her, Emily. I have no doubt I was a teacher, because I teach my children to stand on whatever side and stand proud." And I totally get when you say our status is losing their history. But what you have to understand, y'all, is this is not here for us to like it or dislike it. It is here for us to learn from. And I heard you, and most of you are offended by it, and I see that and understand it, but that's a good thing to be offended, because that means we will never repeat it. And if we keep on like this, you're going to have someone out there, some crazy person we set their mountain, it can be white, it can be black, it could be another race, but something stupid's going to happen. And whatever race that happens, we're all going to be blamed for it. All white men.
All right, we need to move forward. Dr. Keith, we need to move on now. We're going to move on. We are going to move on. We are gonna... There will be order in this meeting. There will be order in this meeting, or some people will be removed. We will move on with our meeting now. If you need to be removed, that's okay, too. We're going to continue with our meeting. Okay, we're going to move on with our meeting because we have very important things to talk about.
You said all white men are changing the vision.
All right, excuse me, we're going to, Dr. Keith, we're going to move on. We're going to move on with what's on our agenda now. Dr. Moore, can we talk about school tax?
Thank you. Let me start off myself again. Thank you so much for coming, all of you who are here tonight. I do appreciate the fact that some of the things that we have on our agenda can be a little bit emotional and create some feelings within us that we might want to express, but at the same time, we need to maintain the decorum of the meeting that we are participating in at this time. And that is for everyone who is in this room. But we do appreciate you being here. You've been a very good audience, and you've been very attentive, and so we do appreciate that. The first item that I want to talk about has to do with a resolution calling for a special election for the levy of the eighteen point five year school tax in Montgomery's school tax district in Montgomery County. This is a legal sort of requirement. We have worked with the county commissioners. We've also gone through the legislative process, which is again a legal procedure that has now been approved so that we can get it on a ballot. Now we have to go back, this sounds rather cumbersome, but it has lots and lots of steps involved, and we don't want to miss any step. So we now have to go back with the resolution, asking the county commission to get permission, put it on the ballot. We have to think about timing, because we'll have absentee voters, and those absentee voters need to be able to get a ballot, and has this particular referendum on it. So that happens sometimes around September. So we keep back with the deadlines for the school system. That's why we'll bring the resolution to you tonight for your approval prior to our meeting in another section of our meeting, so that we can then get this resolution to the county commission. Then the commissioners have to do another action in order to get what we need on the ballot. So there are a lot of steps involved, timing wise, the deadlines, that we have So there are a lot of steps involved, timing wise, the deadlines that we have to meet. And so that's why this resolution is on here tonight for your approval. It stipulates that the secretary to the board, that would be the superintendent, gets the written approval after you voted on it, and we deliver it to the county commission. And we're going to do that probably tomorrow. We'll make sure it's certified, and we'll have a notification on it. So we get it to them in plenty of time for them to be able to get it on their August meeting, probably. And then we can move from that point. So we're going to do everything we have to do as a board first. Make sure we do it in a timely manner, get it where it needs to go, and then the county commission will take it up from there, and then do what they need to do to get it on a ballot. So that's why that's on the agenda tonight. It's not premature, just so that we don't miss our date and time for getting it on the ballot. Okay? So at some point later on tonight, I'll ask for your approval.
Okay.
All right. Any questions about that? It's pretty cut and dry. Leave it. Something happened.
This is not all. Real quick, if we... Okay, can we get a copy of the letter that the CMP lady gave us? I'd just like to read it real quick.
Okay, yes. And I want to tell you something about that in a minute. That's going to take care of it.
Oh, okay, okay.
Okay. If you don't have a question about the resolution, then I'll move to my next thing. But before I next to that, I want to say to all the CMP workers, the ones who have been concerned, and how the fact and are grateful to them again for being out in March, out there, early April, preparing those things, so that our students can continue to be fed, and they can be picked up, the lunches can be picked up. One of the things that we did through our CMP department, and we just recently got word on this, we applied for a grant, which would allow us to pay those CMP workers of stipend for the extra work that they did. And so that has been approved, and so we're going to work with our finance department and with Ms. John Abir to make sure that we can cover those people. You know, technically speaking, everybody is still on payroll. So technically speaking, we could say this is just a part of whatever, but we knew that we could apply for the grant. We did apply for the grant. We received it. So we have some extra money now that we can use.
For the tax.
And I want to say this, as superintendent, sometimes I know you play, and you think I play things kind of close to the test. It's not that at all. I don't want to speak too soon, but there's always some work going on behind the scenes. And I don't want to mislead anybody by saying we're going to get this, because we don't always know. But we do know that behind the scenes, we are filling out the paperwork and turning in the documents and asking for those things that we can ask for. And under the pandemic, there are so many ways that we can get extra money, but we have to go through some hoops. We have to jump through some hoops to get it. We have to fill out documents and make applications. But now, I'm happy, and we're successful, and we do it because we do value the people who work for MPS, and we want to give them a reward, whatever we can, doing what we have to do to make it happen. So that is a good thing, and we want to, again, thank our CNC workers who went out of the way, and there were security people who also worked and went to those places where we were dropping off and picking up meals. And so we want to thank those people also, the security people who were available and who helped us do that. Okay?
First thing on that, when you first got here, I wanted to leave our meeting, because that has been an issue, the CNC problem out there, and I was going to settle.
Amory's life matters. Amory's life matters. History matters.
The CNC workers, because they know they're going to get punished. And now that we hear that, I want to make sure one of them that did a comment very personal about this, has retired. So I wanted to make sure that it would do, because what I heard, that they were letting recall, or giving something compensating, because some of them have retired, they should compensate.
We did do some things that made, gave them some special sort of considerations. But I would say, Mr. Watts, but I'm going to reiterate, I'm sorry, if they were working during that time, if they applied for the...
I'm wrong, please.
With those people who now retired, if they were working for the time, would they consider for that additional money? The ones who worked during the time, if we had supplies, food, and people that worked during that time, would they be a piece of compensation? If they weren't, they'd be part of it. Even if now we're talking... So anyway, that, I hope it takes care of it. We did get the grant. So now, we're going to move on to the next thing. I want to talk a little bit about the reopening draft that we were working on. Again, let me say to everybody, despite the fact that we're living in a pandemic, people who are department leaders, the superintendent and others, we've worked constantly ever since this happened. You know, we've even worked on the weekend and at night. So I'm not asking for any brownie points for that. I'm just saying that we were not idle during this time. You know, when the students were at home, and we were trying to do virtual, and we were trying to figure out how we're going to do it if we have to go out again. Everybody that's in a key role or key position has been working on how we can address this if it happens again, or if we have to reopen. So this has been a constant, not 24 hours, but I would say 18 hours a day for some people, at night and on weekend, even most of us are not taking vacation. Again, not for brownie points, but just to simply let you know, we are not sitting out in the bar trying to figure out, you know, whatever happens, happens. That's not what we've been doing at all. We've really been working on it. So tonight, I want to give you a little bit of information. I know there's a little bit of discussion about changing the start date. I get that. I've talked to people around the state and other areas of the country, and some people who have start date earlier than our start date, maybe they were going to start August 1, they moved to August 10, which is our start date, based on the calendar that we recruit. We'll look at that and see if there's something we need to do that's different. After I tell you tonight a little bit about the plans and how we're looking at all of those things that you are concerned about, we actually have looked at them department by department. So we've looked at CMP, we've looked at operations, we've looked at cleaning buildings, we've looked at nurses, we've looked at transportation, we've looked at communication, we've looked at HR, and how do you decide if you're going to be a virtual teacher or not. This folder right here, this is my COVID-19 folder. It's about a port of what I've actually had to read and digest along with the other staff. This is only about a port of it. These are things that come to us on a daily basis from the feds, the state, and the locals. And so, and then reading what's around the country, what's going on within, a lot of legal advice from attorneys, the school board association, and attorneys across the country, labor tightening, unions and that kind of thing. Want to reiterate that we are, in our state, we don't do collective bargaining with our employees. We're not a collective bargaining state. So a lot of what you read will be from areas where they have collective bargaining. And in many of those states, teachers, the bus drivers and others are not being paid. But in Alabama, they are being paid, even though they were not necessarily in brick and mortar type buildings. So from that point, that's the jumping off. We know that we are going to receive, in consideration of some of the questions we had, and I have my staff here with us tonight, and I've asked them to take maybe about three to five minutes, just to give you a little bit of an overview from their departments, especially in others. But with the cares money, I think we will receive close to 11 million, 12.4 million for MPS to use for COVID-related issues. And then the governor has given the school, the state superintendent, 48 million to be distributed among all the schools in the state. So that's an additional amount of money beyond what we generate as a local school system. And so with that, then we look at what can we do with this money that was created by COVID, basically, any kind of issue that might come up. So now, we're having to put together our application for cares, go through the state within two to four days, probably less, then going to turn that around and give us the approval needed to use our care system in a way we need to do as it relates to COVID. So some of those things, many of those things that we're talking about here tonight, when we talk, this West folk, about the cleaning and the social distancing and the masks, and all of those things that are things that we need to do to help teachers and students be protected health-wise, those things can be covered with some of the cares money, and that's what we're looking at. And so we kind of had to wait until, not that we were trying to prolong it, but before we could submit an application, then we have to get the information out, how much we're going to get, and then what are you going to use for, and then these assessments, and then submitting the written document to the state department, and wait for them to review, and then they're going to tell us back that it's okay for us to do what we say we want to do. So one of the things we talked about doing is that we want to purchase some more devices for our students. We were able to use what we had before and pass them out, but with some of the cares money, we can purchase more. I'm going to ask different ones, because I don't want to steal that thunder, so whatever is under the right note, and then I'll kind of bring it back to what we were talking about. So I've asked different ones in the different departments, because we have a group, we laid a foundational kind of a document, knowing what we knew about the cares money. We did that, and then we brought in about 15 principals to review it and become sort of a task force to look at that and say, well... And we had a representative group from Ellinor and High School and Magnet represented so that they could be the voice of their colleagues, and it would just be simple office people kind of saying, this is what we will do. Now, we're going to take that back to the task force tomorrow, because we made changes based on our first meeting with them. We're going to take it back again for their review, and then we're going to clean it up, and by the first of the week, all of the administrators in our system, all the principals, will have that out of the school and will share it with you also, the cleaned up document. So what I'd like to do, and I'm asking my staff very quickly, if you don't mind, I know this is a lot, so they're not going to go into detail, all the way into detail, to give you a quick overview of the kind of things you're looking at in their area, so that some of the questions that we talked about tonight can be answered. And then when the final election is done, we'll bring it back to you so that you have the swing nomination that we're sharing with the principals. So who wants to go first? Dr. Hood, you're sitting right there, so I think you're part of our group maybe first, if you'll just take a few minutes quickly.
Good evening. I want to give you some background on what we have done thus far for developing our teachers professionally on remote and distance learning, and then let you know what we've got coming up in training for our teachers. This past summer, we had about 32 different sessions on teaching virtually. They ranged from using Zoom to using Google Classroom to using NearPod and all of these other apps. I'm very excited to tell you that doing these trainings this summer virtually, we had a record number of teachers attending these trainings. We had teachers turn out in the droves to virtually learn how to teach virtually. So that's what we've done thus far. When we start back to school, we have the in-service dates, and one of the in-service dates, we're going to have a three-hour training that morning on a new learning management system the district has called Schoology. So the learning management system is kind of like, if you think back to the day, the actual room the teacher uses to teach her students. So the learning management system is the room and the desks. But now, we have to bring in the students, and then the teachers have to develop their lesson and teach. And so I'm all just Schoology first, the room. We're going to have a three-hour training on how to use Schoology. In that training, teachers will create a sample class. They will do everything they're going to need to do in their real class. They will upload materials. They will set up the class course. They will have assignments. They'll grade assignments. They'll give students feedback. All of that will be practiced that morning. When they come back that afternoon, they're going to actually have to create their real class. So they practiced that morning. They'll create their real class, and they'll have to put in the content. And the content for this real class they're going to create first is digital citizenship. Every grade, every student is required to take digital citizenship. So we've already got the content out there in various forms. We've got worksheets. We've got videos. We've got games. We've got quizzes. So when the teacher creates their class in Schoology, they will import the content that they want to use to teach their students. They may choose a video. They may choose a couple of articles to read. They may choose a quiz. They'll get everything set up that afternoon so that they can teach the unit on digital citizenship. The unit consists of about six 30-minute lessons. Then we are expecting every teacher to teach that course through Schoology the first week of school. What that will do is every single teacher will be able to practice creating their class, creating their course. They'll be able to practice disseminating the information, and every single student, including our kindergartners, will learn how to log on, will learn how to go to their Schoology class, and take those few lessons. Teachers are going to be expected to use Schoology to teach periodically, at least once a week, preferably a couple of times a week, every week, so that they keep their skills sharp and students keep their skills sharp. So if it's called in, we get in another emergency situation and school has to be canceled, everybody will know exactly what to do. The teachers can get up the very next morning and continue on, because they know where they are, and the students can continue on because they've been doing it thus far. The state department has contracted with SchoolPLP to offer some content that we can use. SchoolPLP addresses every single grade level, every single subject, every single standard that we're required to teach. That includes AP courses. That includes PE and elective courses. So as a teacher, I can create my Schoology classroom, and then I can go to SchoolPLP and pull in the content that I want to teach, and I can customize it. So I'm teaching fractions to my fifth-grade students. I can go to SchoolPLP, find the fraction lesson, pull it in, and then I can personalize it. I can create my own video to do my own teaching of the concept to my students, and then they'll use the SchoolPLP material to continue on their own. I can do a screencastify and do my whole lesson on the whiteboard, and my students can all listen to that and look at that, and then they can use that SchoolPLP work so that we can ensure that every student has addressed every standard that we have set out for them. The first three Wednesdays in August are going to be partial days. We're going to use the afternoons for professional development, and it will just be continuing ongoing training on how to use Schoology and how to import other things into Schoology so that we can have the best, most highly engaging courses for our students, should we be 100% virtual.
Thank you. That's a quick off. We spent hours. We started this morning. We spent hours, maybe four, five. This morning, we started at 8:30, and we were still on at 1:00, 2:00. 1:30. So we're just like skipping ones and everything, but we know this is so important. We have to get this done, and we know there are a lot of questions out there, so we want to make sure that we try as much as we possibly can to answer those questions. So I'm going to try to go in some kind of order here, but I think if you wait and listen to the people who are talking for a few minutes, if you will hear answers to some questions that you might have been thinking about. So if you don't have an answer, say no, and just give it to everybody if you don't have it. Okay, so the next person that I would like to ask, um, with me, um, with one piece, is Mr. Mitchell here, where he can talk just a little bit about what we're going to do. He did, but Mr. Mitchell can talk a little bit more, and after Mr. Mitchell, you can...
And so then you can begin ready, because it's tiresome with it also.
You can begin ready because it's tiresome with it also.
Good evening. Pick it back enough for Dr. Cook. We want to make sure that we are standards-based so that children are learning the standards that matter and just as she communicated, in the platform, you will be able to see exactly the standard to be learned. And we want to make sure in Montgomery Public Schools that every teacher has, week by week, standard by standard, the content that's critical to them. So every parent will have a document that they can go to and say, on this day, this is what my children should be learning. And the teacher will be able to have that same document and be able to pair with the student and the parent the awareness of what we need to be learning on that day. It's so important. Within the lesson plan and in the framework, there'll be sample activities that they can pull up and see a great example of a standard to be learned. And in Montgomery Public Schools, there's three things we want to be every day. We want to be standard space, so learning what matters. We still want to be student-centered, so our teachers will know how to put their students into classrooms virtually. It's going to be exciting to see what's possible by doing it then. And I know that once we come back and our teachers are amazing, they will catch a hold to everything and they'll say that when we had cognia here, we only scored a one-point whatever, we're technology integration, watch out now. You know, you're going to see that become a three-point-three or whatever, so we're excited about that. I can go on, but we will stop there. Okay.
Okay, and please keep in mind, there's training that goes with the special education program, even with the operations, which might be called chat right now. Right now I'm going to ask Katrina to come, if you'll talk a little bit about the special ed piece, because we get a lot of questions out, well, what about the special ed? If somebody has asked me, said that we need, I need on the line.
All right, good evening. I'm Katrina Jackson, I'm the Director of Special Education. We are developing a comprehensive plan to address the needs of our special ed students in MPS with respect to coming back to school. It's very detailed and it includes our students who are in the self-contained classrooms as well as our students who are in an inclusive setting. Our students are going to have, the ones who are being educated virtually are going to have access to their special education case managers as well as any pair of professionals who have been working with the students. We will be setting up chat rooms in our virtual platform so that when students receive their initial instructions from their general education teachers, they will then be able to move to a chat room to work with their special ed case managers as well as any pair of professionals. We're also looking at how we're going to provide our related services such as physical therapy and occupational therapy virtually. It is going to require that the parents participate in working with the PTs and OTs virtually. However, we are trying to make sure that we addressed every concern that has been raised as far as the special needs students are concerned. So we will have that plan ready and available within the next week so that everyone will have an understanding of what we plan to offer.
Dr. Moore, I've been getting text messages saying that they're not able to hear the speakers at all. Okay, what about now? Can you hear this? Everybody?
No, it's the speakers down there.
Oh, they're looking at YouTube. Okay, who's doing that? Jay, can you check on that forward? Okay, thank you. So it's not in this room, it's, okay, gotcha. Okay, Jay, can you check on that? So next I'm going to ask, I think this has been a real big issue also, a question, and I think so in the order, I'm going to ask Ms. Gilchrist to come and talk about the teaching process. And whilst you're coming, remember, we're going to get whatever the allocation is by student, so that think about the people from Georgia coming in, bringing out the Trump load to teach our children, that's on, I don't know where their rumor started, we'll address that also.
All right, good evening. The biggest question for us, when we met with our principals and we're listening to all of the concerns that they have, and I'm going to take this down slightly so that you can hear, is that better?
Yes.
Is who's going to get to teach virtually and how are you going to do that equitably and fairly? And that's a great question. We're taking our guidance from law and we're taking our guidance from AASB. They have provided guidelines for us to decide who's going to be selected for those positions. First and foremost, we have to look at those with the chronic kind of problems so that they can't actually be amongst all of the kids. Now, we say the kids are working remotely, but that does not mean the teacher is. The teacher can still come to her classroom with no one in it to deliver services because she'll have all of her materials and all of those things in there. Those details we're still working out, but the kids will be remote. Some teachers will be delivering instruction virtually, if that makes sense. One of the things that the AASB shares with us is, how do we decide that? Well, first we look at ADA standards and that's the Americans with Disabilities Act. We have to look at that first and then they have to provide some information to us that, when I say they, meaning employees, once we get that, it'll be done in layers. Then if we still need more virtual teachers, we're setting up a rubric to decide, principals won't get just to say, this one can do it, this one can do it, because we know what happens when that happens, right? So we want to make sure that it's fair. So there will be a rubric that not just the principal will be looking at, some people from curriculum and instruction and some people from human resource will be looking at to decide who's going to teach virtually once we've exhausted what AASB is recommending to us. The other thing that came up as far as HR is concerned is, will we still provide all of the other services that we provide? And the answer, of course, is yes. We'll still help with staffing, loan forgiveness, teacher certification and all of the other things, but the biggest piece for HR will be making sure that we have teachers in the right places, those who need to be remote teachers.
Okay, so remember, keep this in mind that as I moved to before, we as a school district, every school will receive its teacher allocation from the state. So year through, you receive thirty people, thirty teachers, those are your thirty that will be working whether virtually or face-to-face, just depends. And so, of course, you know, we put the survey out to parents so that they can choose one or the other. Somebody asked about why couldn't it be hybrid? It's not to say it couldn't be hybrid, but I think right now, this is my opinion superintendent, that we are trying to look at what is the safest way to have students. So if a parent is concerned, I don't know, my kid at school for whatever reason, then they have a virtual option where they can stay home and still have a certain child teacher, still have all of their services with their child. If, my concern is, if you bring kids in back and forth, back and forth, sometimes in home, sometimes there at school, that they're, we don't know necessarily where those children have been. So I think that we shouldn't do it in one or the other starting out. If we were testing, how can we do virtual in a normal situation? There might be, there might be four or five different scenarios, but we're not trying to see if we do it virtually, what's the best way to do it? We can do it three or four ways, it could be hybrid, it could be blended, it could be all kinds of things. I think in our current situation, we ought to go one or the other. And that way, we can supervise, we know who's been up through, we're asking everybody if you choose virtual, that you do it for nine weeks before you make it to the national school. And if something comes up in the middle of that nine weeks, there's a real emergency, we'll look at that case by case. Some parent might have something happen and we might have to look at it at that individual school, case by case, not a blanket statement. If you're finding many of these things, we're not making total blanket statements about how we do some things because some of them will be an individual approach to how we do it based on circumstances.
Dr. Moore, I know our problem with all kink and everything, but have you really considered, you know, I know everybody's talking about starting early and I'm one of the ones that I spoke to you about this, and I understand your reasoning for this, but August the tenth seemed to be an early date. Could we not, the same program that you have right now, because your concern is to make sure that everybody will know how to use the devices, right? Am I correct on that? Okay, well, that's one of them, but and the safety of the children. Parents are concerned about those and a lot of work in parents, the ones that are pushing school to start, but they're not saying that. We just hear from the ones that say, we're starting too early. So could we take those two weeks in the month of August, let everybody be virtual for those two, to teach them how to use the devices, see if the teachers really feel comfortable with it instead of having some to be virtual and some to be face-to-face? And just perhaps, I think parents would feel a lot better if we could just perhaps have start school at August tenth because that is the time that you want to do this, but let everybody, because your concern was at the end of the school, some of the students did not have the opportunity of others that had Wi-Fi at home and all of that. So could we just take those two weeks, let the teachers report to the schools in their particular classroom, not with any other teachers or whatever, do exactly what they would be doing, like a dry run for two weeks and then let the students, everybody stay home and we might have to close school sometime in August, we never know because the cases are going up so rapidly. So I'm just thinking about sort of a win-win situation for everybody, just let those students start at August tenth like you're saying, but let the teachers come to school, everybody come to school, do their training or whatever they have to do and then be ready to start with everybody, still those that have to come to school because parents are working can still do that and then everybody will know how to use the device. And maybe with some of the CARES money, we could make sure that those homes that don't have Wi-Fi would have Wi-Fi. And I know I'm talking about in the olden days because that's what they used to call it in our system, but we had something called Channel One and you remember Channel One? I made myself, but that's okay. That's what I'm saying, let's just think about some of these things. I mean, people are, some people are happy about it because they get a chance to get their children out of the house, they've been trying to get out of the house forever. But there are a lot of them that don't want them in school because of the health issues, so that's just something to consider. And I believe there will be more people happy with that arrangement than starting back to school August the tenth. That's my personal opinion.
If I could piggyback on that, a lot of the northern schools don't start and go after labor day and that still gives us a whole other one to see if it's going to decrease or anything like that. So I, I, you know, I just think if you're going to pick a date, and I'd rather it be June, I'd rather do the whole thing, but if we're going to compromise labor day, you know, let's just do August.
So let me just comment on what you said. First of all, you know, she pretend to serve as a board and so if the board decides that they want to do something different with the calendar, we have to make that adjustment. So I want to add something to what you said, listen to both of you. First of all, we have to have the one-hundred-and-eighty days or the equivalent of one thousand whatever number of hours, one thousand, one hundred whatever hours.
If you do it online, you can do that.
So two things have to happen, change, you have to change, you have to make adjustments on your calendar. So you either know, and say you start every day, you have to start there and go one-hundred-and-eighty days for the kids, or you have to make your school days longer maybe in order to make up the amount of time that's required by state law.
Dr. Moore, but I understand, it was my thought, let me finish. What I'm saying is, I understand what you're saying and I understand that we voted on the calendar, but we voted on that calendar before we knew we had a problem and we knew we had an issue.
I agree with that and I'm saying, if you, if you all decide you can change the calendar, then we'll get together and we'll readjust it, so that's not a problem. We can have to bring it back over here. That is not a problem. But I want to talk to you a little bit more about what I consider to be instructional gaps from what we had to do, we were forced to do back in March. So we had people, we had teachers who did not know how to teach virtually, we had students who did not know, did not know how to receive virtual instruction. So we have an instructional gap in many cases where the students nor the teachers knew how to deal with virtual instruction. So my thinking is, no matter when we start, if we, if we delayed by say two weeks, then we would definitely have to figure out a way to get training for the teacher. The students also need to know how to use it. So the thought that I had was, if they come in for a happy day on Wednesday, the students go home and the teachers get more training, but during the student day, whenever that is, teachers are able to practice with the students so that the students and the teachers are learning at the same time how virtual works. Also, what we did talk about was the training for parents and that would be done for them virtually, but it would be an ongoing, whenever you want to click on, your mom, your grandma, big brother, sister, anybody that would be supervising their kid, they would also learn how this virtual piece works, how to get into the platform, how to access the lessons so that our children are not subjected in many cases to some kind of emotional or physical trauma because this is something nobody understands and moms and dads and others don't understand, but the kid, a second grader can learn how to do this, but would need the assistance starting out, practice also in the classroom. So that's a part, a big part of our push. If we decided that we want to change the calendar by how many other days, we have to make those adjustments, we have to make sure that we meet the requirement of one-hundred-and-eighty days in school, one-hundred-and-eighty-seven days for teachers. We could make an adjustment on the calendar or we can extend the school day so that the number of hours required could be that instead of one-hundred-and-eighty days, it would be a thousand plus hours. We would have to ask for a special permission from the state supercomputer, but that's typically not a problem.
What I thought, main focus should be what's good for our students and what's the safest thing to do. And if we, if we have laser focus on that, I think we'll be okay because if we have to extend the class day by, I mean, the day by hour or class time or what, I don't think parents would be too upset about that. They would rather do that and keep their children home a little longer than they would to come and I promise you, and I'm not clairvoyant, but I promise you, if we don't do something similar to that, we're going to be out of school again and we'll be in the same shape we were in March.
And to add, to add to that too, the safety of the teachers and the staff.
So my fear is that it's going to be out probably sooner than we think and I want us to be ready when we go out, I want our kids, because I think if we had been able to do our assessments this year and some other things, that we would have seen some improvements in our physical performance, but we were not able to do those big things. But I don't want us, the next time they say we're going to do it again, to have a dip. And if we're not very careful, we will. So we've got to figure out how to get the teachers trained, get the kids trained, get the parents or whoever the primary caretaker is going to be during that timeframe, get them all trained so that they know how to access virtually and the students are comfortable taking their devices that we want to supply for them through the CARES, some of the CARES money, that they know how to get into it. And like I said, probably a kindergarten who's trained will know how to get in there and find whatever it is that they need to find.
These children are more out of the, with the conscious technology.
So I'm, I'm, I guess I'm hearing, I think I'm hearing from several at least, that we need to reconsider the start date by at least a couple of weeks or.
Or at least have the first two weeks be virtual.
So the start date could be the tenth, but it would be virtual.
Yes.
All right, so we still have to figure out how to get that training because even though it says do it virtually, that's actually, that's a timing kind of thing, but the actual ability to do it is, is a factor in it. And so we have to figure out how do we get that training because even though they do it virtually, it's not effective. Obviously it's a whole picture, but it needs to be effective.
Then if we get this, then what's it?
They were not, they were not training how.
So as Mary said, that first couple of weeks can be fine. You see what I'm saying? If you're trying to, like you said, even if it's a trial, if your parents, if we get virtual, they.
It's not quite that simple, but I understand what you're saying and we're going to try. You can't add two eighty days. You can't add a lease contract without paying. So we still have to look at it from a more than a perspective. Teaching number one is important. We've got to do that. Safety is important. But we also have to look at, as we're sitting over here, she'll acknowledge this. We can't tell teachers, well, you're going to work another number of hours or number, number of days without paying them for it.
Hey, yeah, I like to say that.
So we are aware of that because we've been teaching to principals, we know how to do it. So, but in this effort, we have to cover all the bases. The basic thing I'm hearing you say is you want the calendar to, not the calendar, but if you start in the tent, would make it virtual. From my perspective, we have to get some training in there for the teachers and parents and students on how to use that device.
But what you're, what you're saying, Dr. Moore, correct me if I'm wrong. They're still going to have to have the training, right? So if you start soon with the face-to-face and the virtual, you still got to have the training. But if you wait the two weeks, those two weeks, the face-to-face as well as the virtual, everybody will be virtual for those two weeks. And as the teachers, a lot of them will have to learn how to teach virtually. So why not, why rush it and, and make it difficult for the parents, for the students, and for the teachers? That's all I'm saying.
And I understand, I understand what you're saying. The only thing that I'm saying is we can do it, but it's going to still put us behind. Because if you're trying to teach virtually and you don't know how to teach virtually, and you're trying to teach kids for two weeks when you haven't learned how to teach virtually, as opposed to face-to-face, and there, you're learning, you're practicing with the kids at the same time on a complete start with virtual, you're practicing all the time on something you really don't know yet. But we can do whatever you, I'm not debating that. We can do whatever you all feel comfortable with us doing. And we'll try to make it work from the instructional piece of teachers learning how to do virtual, students learning how to do virtual. We can, we can do that. I just think we'll still be a little bit behind because it's like throwing somebody in the water and say swimming.
But that's what you're doing if you start September 10th, I mean, August 10th. Because she, because she, I know right now, I, I don't know how, the number, but I know there are a lot of teachers that are not ready to teach virtually or face-to-face.
Well, I, that's our opinion.
Okay. So I mean, we're at a start, we're going to have some issues.
So, Dr. Moore.
So, I don't want to ask, but generally speaking, I'm going to ask the staff to revisit the calendar and, and look at the year you just started the same time, but doing virtual.
That's, that's, that would be good.
That I'm hearing, so that we could keep it August 10th, but it would be virtual.
And the children stay home for those two weeks, learn?
Dr. Moore.
All right, we can make it, we can make it work.
Can we make it so that that training would be going on anyway, starting August 4?
We could still do the half-day Wednesday training. We could still do that because that's the kind of what we're planning anyway, even if we were face-to-face, that we would not. So we could schedule so that the half-hour on Wednesday is training again on virtual platforms and how to make that work. We can still do that every week or these three weeks. And then ongoing, and we're asking principals to check, to monitor. We did not have enough of that the last time when we had to go out suddenly. We did not have enough monitoring about, by principals. Of how a teacher was logging in and how many times they responded to parents. We did not have enough of that information. But we can get it, we can pull it up through technology. But we need to make sure that our supervising administrators make sure that the teachers in this case are continuously working with the students. So if their comfort level is up on how to do this, then they will probably at least do more checking. And it's an expectation that we're going to put out there, if we're teaching virtually, there's an expectation that you still have to keep up with what the students are doing, even under student services, I'm going to call them, Dr. Moore was going to say. But even under student services, if you are a social worker or someone who checks on kids who are absent, and all those things are still in place, even though it may be virtual, you're expected to participate as a student. And so we have those students still in place who will be checked. So we're going to look at the virtual start two weeks.
Two weeks virtual, everybody.
And then we'll see what happens after that. Is that pretty much?
Because if we have to shut down, then all of the students will know how to use that device.
I know you have a long agenda and most of my questions have been asked. I do have one though, and I don't know where it fits. You can decide when, where to answer it. But have we looked at data to determine how many students we can accommodate and safely?
In a school?
In a, yes.
We're looking at that now. We're getting the surveys done, so we know by number how many people are virtual. And then we can look at the school and see how we need to space students out. In this packet or somewhere, there's something that says, for instance, if you think you've been in contact, that, that if you, this is interesting to me, I don't know how you would do it, but it says, if you were not, if you were wearing a mask, but you were not close to that person sixty or whatever, more than fifty minutes. If you were less than fifty minutes, it doesn't really count. So there are all kinds of obities in what they say and what we have to digest. And so we have to take all of those things into consideration when we go in and look at the school. This might be a good time for Chad to come and talk about it from the operations and everything.
And while he's coming, Dr. Moore, you have not received the surveys. He won't get them until on the 20th. So you really don't know how many would want to be face-to-face and how many would want to be virtual anyway. And that would determine how the classrooms would have to be set up.
Exactly. We know that I'm going to be tabled, you know, since it's very close, so we know some of those things are going to be done.
That's almost a catch-22, Dr. Moore, because we have people who don't want to do the survey until they see the plan.
Right. And so that's why we're giving you the update tonight. The first piece is what we talked about, the platform. The other part is, for whatever reason, you might decide you want to go out there and give a choice or the other. And then the HR needs to fix that. So these are the things we're talking about. You're going to have regulars through a teacher who teaches algebra one, who's going to teach algebra one content, whether it's virtual or face-to-face. You're going to get the same as Mr. Mitchell said, the standards of what we want to cover. So it doesn't matter if it's virtual or face-to-face. You're going to get the same content in algebra by a certified teacher who has been a lot to your school. So then through the HR process, we have to determine who's going to be virtual, teaching virtually, or who's going to be face-to-face with a group of students in a classroom.
And I'll be brief. As far as when we do virtual or face-to-face, what kind of job do I need to be in? My first question is really about the staff, because it seems that we have enough students to teach or we're going to get on salary.
Your mic is on.
Well, I'll start on. Two questions. I wanted to know, again, based on the CDC guidelines because of spacing, if we would have enough teachers to teach? Because when you space them out, that requires more staff. And I don't know if the CARES Act money allows us to hire more staff. I was reading it, trying to just get an understanding, watching the State Department meeting, the State Board meeting this morning. Well, yeah, this is morning, this morning as well, looking for some answers on how they're going to address this. And I have to say, honestly, you're not, you're not in an easy spot. If the state superintendent can't answer it, best of the boss answer is, you know, I don't know. I'll, I'll just refrain from my opinion. But we do need a plan. And I know it's hard because at the federal level, there's really no guidance. At the state level, who depends on the federal government for guidance, there's no guidance. And they're really laying this in the local boards laughing, saying, y'all figure it out. So I'm asking, because now they say we've got to figure this out. Are we going to have enough staff? Is there going to be money, you know, to bring in additional staff? To make sure that we're following the CDC guidelines of spacing? Will we be able, are we going to utilize subs to teach? You know, what is that going to look like from that standpoint?
So briefly, you have your allocation by school. So if a school is allocated thirty teachers based on last year's enrollment, that thirty would be at that school as far as enrollment goes. Then we take the surveys from that school, not from any other school, from that school. How many want virtual, how many want face-to-face? Then we work with the principal to determine how many virtual teachers we need and how many face-to-face teachers we need. But it's still going to be based on your allocation of thirty teachers. Now, once we, as far as the sub-question goes, if a, let's say, let's say a middle or a high school runs into a situation where they need a math teacher and we don't have any math teachers in the pool, that's the only reason they would have a sub, is that we can't find a certified math teacher. That's pretty typical, even without the coronavirus. That you find a person who can sub in math until we can find a certified person. Then we have other platforms that we use. We use edenuity, the state has approved that allocation for a teacher to allow edenuity to be a virtual sort of a teacher. And that money that we would receive at that school for a math teacher can be used to pay for a certified teacher through edenuity. And so there are other platforms out there that may have to do virtually. Again, some of this is a moving topic. How we don't know, there are so many things we don't know. But we do know that in the normal sort of field of how we have to do things, if we look for a math teacher, there's nobody there we have to recruit, we have to find somebody. In the meantime, until we find somebody, we have to put a sub in there. So in that case, we would have some subs, some places. But they might be teaching virtually or they might be teaching face-to-face, depending on if they've gone through the training. I really don't want us to use, we want to teach virtually if they are not committed to being a really good virtual teacher. Because that is a different sort of a way of delivering instruction. So some people will want to do it, they will be very committed to learning how to do it. And those are the people, just like in the classroom, the people who are face-to-face. We want people who are committed and will do a great job. But virtually, we have to make sure that the training that we're talking about occurs and that the children learn how to use the device as well as the parents, as much as possible. But the sub-question, during a typical day, typical year, we're going to have to have subs. That is one of the things we have to work out and try to make it as smooth as possible through HR. And then there are other gimmicks that we can use. You know, we don't want to ask teachers to teach beyond their whatever number of hours, but there may be a way to contract with some retired teachers and others who might, who might teach two hours a day and learn how to do it virtually. And they can help teach that math class where there is no math teacher per se. So there are a lot of other ways that we're thinking about looking at that. Again, is a case-by-case scenario. I can't say blanket across the system, this is how we're going to do everything. But then we will have certain ways of addressing any deficiencies that might pop up. So we could be able to say, plan B is this.
Are we at all considering that teacher A could be teaching six to eight students in person, on-site, and also have a camera going such that there are more students? That a given teacher might not be limited to just a few students. Those few students in the classroom can also be virtual at the same time.
There's possibility, there's one of the things we've thought about. A child got sick, face-to-face, maybe has a cold or maybe has something else, and he has to be out all week. We thought, we're talking about kids who might be suspended. They might not be in school because of their behavior, but they can still virtually continue their lessons. There are lots and lots and lots of things that we're looking at as possibilities. At the alternative school, if you're being expelled, that you might be still virtually able to keep up with your classes. So there are other ways that we can do it that would be, I think, a great thing for our school system that would enable us to cover a lot of kids a different way, especially when we talk about virtual. We cannot though, go beyond what a teacher is typically required to do unless we have some other way of looking at compensating, looking at compensating that teacher for extra time. An aide cannot teach. They have to work under the supervision of a certified teacher. So an aide cannot have a class. If someone is teaching virtually though, from another place, from home, and there are five or six kids who need supervision, that aide can be in there with that group of kids. But somebody who's certified, unless they're a sort of, has to be doing the teaching. So those are all the ways we have to just make sure to be covered correctly.
Yeah, this was not a question asking for a different time of day, this would be the same hour. For example, we are in this meeting right now, but there are about three or four hundred others participating in this meeting. And that's the kind of classroom I foresee us having in the near future, such that the instructor is there teaching, and these students are getting the very same thing that the virtual students are getting at the same time.
Right. That is, that's part of what we do, but we have to be careful with numbers. Even, and we're talking about adults watching now, but with students, when you have to do assessments, you have to do grading, you have to do the teacher record, the field grade. I mean, so we can't say that two, two hundred can't watch me teach a lesson, but somebody else has to be responsible for the assessment and grading and putting that on the record for that student.
I apologize, my example was not clear enough. I, I was saying, you know, she might only have six in the classroom, but there might be another six watching. So we're talking about a maximum of twelve.
Oh, yeah, yeah, yeah. That, that's a real possibility. For instance, at this school, if somebody, six, they've done their scheduling and they have six more left who want virtual, and I'm six in the classroom, yes, that teacher, you know what I'm saying? Both professors could have all those students on the board, yes, that, that would be done.
Question, have you considered doing the, maybe the flip-flop schedule where some students in the class could go Monday, Wednesday, Friday, and the next week, Tuesday, Thursday, so as to, so that the classes wouldn't be overcrowded?
So we've thought about that. A lot of it depends on if a parent wants their kids to be told to virtual. They don't want them to come to the break room or that all. That would be...
You know, as an option for overcrowding for those who are coming. You know, because some classrooms just, you know, if you have a class of, of let's say, of thirty and it's a, it's a small classroom, you know, size-wise and making sure.
That, that is a possibility for those who choose face-to-face.
What's important, I think, what's important, I think now is that parents make a choice. I know a lot of people want to see a plan, but the plan is a bit dependent upon how many choose to go which way. Am I correct?
Right. And then we have to work with each principal. Not, we can't make a global statement about every school because some schools are really small. They don't have that. And then some schools are much larger. And so because of the spacing, we have to consider maybe some alternative ways to do whatever parent wants with the spacing. Because in the person, in the person world, we would have the right number one virtual and the right number one face-to-face and so to see if they might still be doing this. But we are going to work through all of that, looking in the junior schools, looking at all the options that possibly could come up as a scenario. And what's a scenario is, one school might not work at the other school. So we still have to look at the junior school, work with the principals, and try to make it so that it's safe, it's safe we can make it, and that the learning process still continues so that students, no matter where they are, are given the best instruction possible.
And I hate to put Mrs. Giles of Florida on, on blast, but I'd like for you to talk with her with an idea she has about the face-to-face and the virtual going on at the same time. Good plan.
So we, don't mind, we'll move on. And then if you have some other questions, I know this, this is really hard for us, it's also heavy to talk. So as much as your ideas are good ideas, it's almost a perfect scenario, school by school. And we work with them, the same way we do face-to-face. If the principal calls and says, I have a problem, I don't have enough teachers for the scheduling thing. There are people who are in the central office who are really good at scheduling. And they actually go out and work with the principal on how to schedule the people. We do the same thing on space and the same thing... We do the same thing on space and the same thing with the classroom, it seems to be on the front. How do you work that out so that it's safe and you still are able to do, we do instructions? But again, this is school by school after you get to that. It's going to be school by school. All right, Ken?
No, you're good. Uh, well, and I'd like to start off by saying, I'd like to thank my departments. I mean, most of our folks that are twelve months, we never stop working through this and being on-site. I mean, it's, it's hard to repair an air conditioner from your house virtually. So they, they were on-site working, uh, CMP was coming in, serving meals, I mean, you just, you had everybody pulling through. And, and I won't say it wasn't difficult in some situations, but they really made the best of the situation. So as far as operations, what we did initially, and I know the, the big key in, in our group is logistics with the cleaning of the schools. One of the things we did initially with the shutdown was we went in and, uh, disinfected every, from our logistics level, every elementary school where they did not have a twelve-month custodian, uh, that was staying on-site. Uh, the other schools, the schools with twelve-month custodians, utilized those folks to help with their disinfection and, and that. And then we've just been throughout going and disinfecting different areas as needed along the way. The second thing was the state provided some guidance with that when we started about how to properly clean and disinfect that fell along the lines of the CDC. So we took those plans from, uh, the state and married it with our own, which, uh, Dr. Boswell has done a great job and, and his predecessors in putting those things in place. Uh, we pretty much mirror as far as how we clean and, and the guidelines we set forth. We pretty much clean along the CDC guidelines, so we were not far off there with those things. And then we provided that to the principals, uh, to be able to disperse to their custodians as they came back into the buildings after the shutdown, the initial part of the shutdown through the end of the school year. So they were able to utilize that with those things. We've also, uh, we had a kind of an outcry from the elementaries as far, this summer, as far as having a custodian on-site. And I, I would like to thank, you know, um, Mr. Watts and, uh, Dr. Moore as far as any kind of requests that we've had, that we've brought to them. They have done their very best to try to meet those needs. And, uh, they, along with this, were able to provide a custodian per school as, as we could find applicants for the elementary schools to have for at least half a day when the middle schools and high schools, of course, they have twelve-month custodians, uh, as long as we don't have vacancies, which we have, we have several of those in, in the district. But we're able to provide a limited, uh, source in those type of things. But that's where we've been following along with, with the cleaning part. And Dr. Boswell is going to be working on setting up a Zoom meeting with, with the principals or administrators in the buildings to go over those guidelines once again that have, uh, been in place just to make sure they understand what, what a clean school and, and what the job of the custodian should be on a day-to-day basis as far as scheduling and, and what it should look like and help provide them with guidance. Because, you know, you have some administrators that are curriculum people and you have some people that are operations administrators, that are operations people. And it's sometimes it's hard to find both. So we understand that. I mean, we ha- may have a jam-up curriculum administrator at this school, but operations may be their weak point, so we really want to try to help them with that. And then some schools, and I'll give a shout out to Ms. Fountain. She handles it. We, we don't have to, we have to give her very little assistance as far as guiding that. She does a great job in managing her school as far as the operational side of things. I'm not with curriculum, so I, I want to attest to that. But I'm sure she does a, I was going to say, I'm sure she does a good job with that as well. So, uh, but I, I give her some props on that. You know, but we understand that, we know where we're going to be needing on those things. One of the big, uh, questions, I'm sure, and it starts with, uh, three letters, PPE. Um, everybody has learned what that means, uh, through this whole thing. And, yes, so initially, initially, the masks were a very difficult thing. And of course, they jacked the price up on them. And that is coming down, the stocks are coming up. But we know too, once school starts and things happen, things are going to be bought out with that. And we've, we've got our orders in, they've assured us they're going to be in on time for, for the different PPE that we need as far as the people that are disinfecting day-to-day. Uh, one of the things that we wanted to provide for the teachers and all faculty and staff is a clear face shield that will cover, um, one of the things Dr. Moore was talking about in one of our meetings was, it's very difficult for a kindergarten teacher to teach phonics and enunciate and teach a student to enunciate with a mask on their face. So we, we wanted to provide a facial covering, clear face shield for each employee, and that'll be coming in. Uh, we've provided sneeze guards for the front that deal with the public and what, what's going on with air. And, uh, we're also working on, uh, one-time care kit for each employee that has various items in it to help a teacher, uh, kind of get started. Well, there's some, some of the same things they might ask the, the students to bring at an elementary level. You know, some wipes and disinfectant, mask, gloves, that sort of thing. It's just going to be very difficult to provide all of those type of items on a regular basis to every employee, everyone out there. I mean, even if we had the funding for that, it'd be very difficult to maintain all of that and get that out to those levels. So we're putting guidance together for the folks that do disinfection. Uh, we've met with the nurses, or the head of the nurses and talked about some of their items from what the, the state superintendent gave us guidance on. Uh, we met with, I, I put a small group of principals together to go through some of those guidelines to, to kind of identify what the word, what some of those ambiguous words could be like frequently. I mean, frequently to me may be three, three times. Frequently to another person may be every five minutes. You know, so we wanted to kind of get a basic guideline for, for some of those words that could be, you know, mean many different things. And we wanted to make sure that we, you know, get that out to those folks and, and have a guideline when they come along with it. Um, CMP is working on their stuff. They're, they've been encouraged from a state level to do more of a grab-and-go style instead of congregating all in, all in a lunchroom. So we're, we're working on those measures with that. Close, cover, grab-and-go. Uh, Ms. Beard is working with the principals to make sure that we, uh, cover any kind of food allergies or any, any kind of special diets that need to be made. So there's just a lot of things going on with operations. We're touching parts of, of, uh, curriculum as well with the devices, a lot of devices, thousands of devices on order. So we're just going to continue to work hard and work forward on it. And, uh, we don't, there's not a lot of great, just predefined guidance on this, but we're going to listen to our constituents, we're going to listen to our leadership and, and our board and, and continue to improve and make it better for our kids and our teachers to be here and be safe and ease some of that anxiety.
So two things, Ken, you are going to continue to, for instance, if a student is virtual, they will be able to come and pick up food the way that you've done all during this class, month, two months. So that was still going to work. Uh, it may be a two-day-a-week, come Monday and pick them up for five days, come another day and pick them up for another five days. So they will not be left out. I've had hours about that for that. The plan is to still food, you know, prepare people for food for kids who are not physically there. The other thing, Ken, did you talk a minute about what we talked about with transportation buses?
Transportation with buses, you know, we had a lot of, my initial thought was let's put, good, okay. The, uh, transportation, you know, initially thought like putting up some kind of plexiglass behind the driver to protect our drivers because some of them are older. Uh, we met with the state, they came out to the bus yard and actually walked us through with that. And that was a no-go because it did not meet manufacturer specifications and would open them up and us up to liability with that. That's where I turned to the face shields and, and got, got an idea on that and started working on that. So that'll give each one of our employees that i- idea on it. The state also is going against what the CDC recommendations are. The CDC recommendations are, are one student per seat, every other seat. Uh, that would be twelve students to a, to a bus. And, uh, they felt like that would be too difficult, uh, and, uh, not cost feasible with, with some of those things. So they're going to stick with manufacturer's guidelines on that. As far as seating capacity, they did encourage that we keep a seat behind the driver open. And, uh, one of the things for that is, is, you know, if we have a student that gets on the bus that may, you know, get on the bus fine, but then comes up and says, you know, "I, I feel sick, Mr. or Miss so-and-so." We want to also have an isolation seat for those students that we can, if anybody were feeling sick, we could put them in those isolation seats away from the others. The state's idea on a bus is, is that each one of those bus seats is compartmentalized. And so that, they're built to that specification. That's why they don't put seat belts on buses with that. And it puts them in that area. And then, of course, Dr. Moore's put out the guidance that, you know, each student will be required to wear masks, you know, on, on school property and that would be buses included. So that's something the state, luckily, we came in and they are going to provide masks. That was something in the, in the news the other day for each person, each student and, uh, employee. So we were glad for that, to have that. And then we'll have limited quantity, of course, for our drivers to have there. If, if a student shows up and doesn't have their mask or face covering, we want to be able to make sure we get them on the bus. We're not going to, we're not allowed by law just to leave them by the side of the road. So we, we definitely wouldn't do, do that in that situation.
Sir, Ken, just before I make the end question, I think, ever, we're going to continue running buses like we have. I think the plexiglass for the, for the bus driver.
No, we're, we're not. We can't, we can't. The manufacturer's guidelines, if it's a, if it's a fifty-four passenger bus, they'll allow fifty-four passengers to get on the bus. Yes, ma'am?
No, but you said plexiglass for the bus.
Yep. Yeah, we can't do, we can't modify the bus with a plexiglass. That's why we had to do the face shields. Correct. Yes, ma'am. They, they've given us that.
An isolation seat on a bus in case a kid happens to get on there that's a field, they won't be in with the other student. Also, when you get to the school, um, they will have an isolation space as well at every school in case a student is ill or feels ill, that's how mom can pick him up. That student is in an isolated place until mom gets there to get him.
Okay, now, I, I think, out of what I heard this, but my understanding was we were going to be taking temperatures before they got on the bus.
We've, we've got thermometers on order and we want to provide a minimum of three to four per school. And we've got two hundred on order. They're, again, very difficult to get our hands on, but, uh, they're promising us they'll be here, so we want to provide that there.
Technically, they could be going through two temperature checks. A temperature check to the bus and then to the school?
That, possibly so, yes, ma'am.
We definitely know, you know, at the school, they will be going through a temperature check as they enter the building.
What happens, I mean, I'm just asking all these questions, what happens if they get to the school, even if a parent brings them, drop them off or whatever? I mean, when they're outside, I mean, this sounds like a dumb question, but we have to answer that. What, what do we do with that child that does have a picture of the parent's body?
We put them in an isolated place in the school. That's a requirement for every school to have a place where we can isolate the child in a case of that, until we get a parent back to get them and, and take them out. And we're going to ask, you know, we're not going to just have dealers popping in, we call the parents, they have to wear a mask when they come in to pick them up. Those are all the things that we're going to work with every principal on so that at every school, they'll follow those guidelines of things that we could do to keep something from spreading if we should anticipate. Sometimes a child has a temperature and it's not coping out it, it's something, just a common code. Uh, but so we're going to be careful though, in all of those cases so that there's a spot for them to be in perfectly near the front of the school so that they're not mixing in with the rest of the students anymore than, you know, they have to. When we make that determination, they won't be out of the school anymore until they leave. Okay? So those things are going to be doing at the school level. Those things have to be done with every principal. Training is going to take place, nurses are going to be trained, custodians are going to be trained on cleaning, uh, checks, I respect that. Bus drivers are going to be trained on all of the things that we want them to do so that it's not a guessing, you know, miscount of situation. Everybody's got to be trained on everything that we can think of. And if something comes up later, we have to do training and bring them back and train on that.
Okay, that was another, another, obviously, another bottom line. Teacher gets to school, she has students. She doesn't, she doesn't, or with, with, they have stuff, they're coming right there. And you said, you said where I'm going.
One of the things we talked about today, as recently as today, is that we want to look at having a pool of subs who have gone through all the training, virtual, face-to-face, what to do in a situation. We have a pool of subs that are at the ready that we hope, we probably, if there's thirty of them, we call one of them and say, "Hey, teacher, it's school B." And they go. That is, you know, again, it's a moving target, but that's one of the ones. We also talked about having a group of custodians who can go in and have you do a sweep at a school. They're not attached to any school. They are just there and they go do, if there's a problem at school check and say, "Okay, I need you to go over to the school B and break the whole thing down." So we, we're talking about putting those together. We're working with Mr. Watts, how we're going to use the CARES money because we can use it to do stuff in a pandemic that we not, would not normally be able to do. So we're trying to look at every possible way to use that money to make people feel safe, parents, teachers, students, everybody. Uh, and, you know, it might, eventually the money's going to go away, but right now we have it. Like I said, we have twelve-one, whatever, million, and then we have another forty that the governor has given us forty million. And we'll get some of that. And so we're trying to make the best use of it possible. We have to have supplies, people, um, which I was speculating is wanting to make like, there's like, monitors, there'll be affordable, uh, shields so that if they're giving, uh, any assessments that they give to students, if there's something between them, we'll do it. As well as the, the facial covering if they need it. The shield, the, you know, the plastic kind of cover. So that's why I'm meeting them on and on, but that's not the first one we had. We've had lots and lots of students. And we think about some of the same things you're thinking about. They pop up as we're talking. And so when they pop up and they're so good, because we try to figure out what can we do if this pops up, how can we address it?
Uh, I had a quick question. Uh, let me just start with a story first. During COVID, when we, when it was announced, my washing machine broke and I had to go to Lowe's and get one. Uh, I still have not received it. I ordered it in March. So you're saying that the cleaning products have been ordered. When were they ordered and did they give you a definite date when they could get them?
Most of it was ordered, I mean, we've ordered it back in April, May with, with those. And we've received a lot of just the day-to-day stuff, but some of the specialty things like the backpack sprayers. At the beginning of this year, I bought seven and that was more for the, the previous August. That was more for flu outbreaks. And it really served us well. Like, we have not had to outsource to spray and, which would have cost us tremendously. And our logistics department has come in and done a magnif- magnificent job. My worry is getting overwhelmed, you know, when, if we come in and having to do ten in one day. So we've ordered a ton of the backpack sprayers. They've promised us that those would be in prior to the start of school and we will train our people on those and try to get, get those out to the schools. Because, you know, the local could handle, you know, with, if they have one of those backpack sprayers, they could handle a couple of classrooms or a gymnasium or something like that. I mean, if there's an entire building, we'll have to come in and help them with that. And that's where the pool would come to play that, that Dr. Moore was talking about, having some of those maybe retired custodians or some other groups from different areas that could come in and, and may work after hours to help us try to get those, uh, those other things sprayed.
So as the kids are changing class, especially middle and high school, I know that, to my understanding, whoever guidelines, I've read some, and I can't remember who and what now, but the wiping down of desks, as far as Lysol wipes or maybe bleach and water, whatever, uh, most people, most teachers tend to like the wipes because it's quick and it's easy. Is that going to be a problem? Are we going to be okay with that? Because I know I can't find it.
That is a problem. So that, but the chemicals, you know, and it's not a special chemical that just kills COVID. There's, there's several things out there, pretty general cleaners that, that kill COVID and, and other viruses as well. The big issue is, is the dwell time. You know, when you, when you spray Lysol, if you read the back of that can, you're not supposed to touch it for so many minutes. And that's the same thing with any of our chemicals. It's going to be very difficult to, to wipe down a, a desk every time somebody comes in with that, you know. The big thing I encourage too, we got to teach proper hygiene like never before. I mean, wear your mask, don't touch your face, wash your hands, provide that hand sanitizer. I mean, as a, as an old coach, I remember the big MRSA scare that came along early on with the staph infection. Everybody was deathly afraid of it and we had to go. Everybody was deathly afraid of it and we had to go in and teach our kids to how to take care of themselves to get through that part of it because I've seen what MRSA can do to kids and people that get it. So it's a challenge and we're going to fight the challenges as best we can and do the best job we can and with the resources we have. And again, I know Mr. Watts stepped out, but I'd like to thank he and Dr. Moore with the CMP side of things. CMP is pretty self-sufficient and we make our money off of how many meals we serve. Over this, through this COVID crisis, we were going in the hole about $500,000 a month in overhead and Mr. Watts didn't bat an eye in making sure that. And if he had not taken the measures that he did early on with our finances, we could have been in a lot of trouble and he did a great job with that and taking us through that. So I just really appreciate him and give him a shout out on that. But he carried us through that with our, and making sure our personnel could continue to get paid and taken care of with that.
I have one more question. It's about, I was listening to Dr. Fauci and he was talking about it being airborne and making sure that appropriate ventilation is in buildings. So as far as our schools, I know we have some schools who are getting new units, but are all of our schools going to be taking care in that regard? Because it, you know, it tends to linger in the air for about three hours if someone coughs or sneezes. And so I know that they were saying you got to have proper ventilation. So is that?
And that's part of the CDC guidelines? I mean, I encourage them to open a window in the classroom if that's available. I mean, fresh air is one of the best things that you can have in those. Again, if we get a maintenance work order on an air conditioner, that's one of the things. Luckily, we've had train in there with us because there's no way that the four guys that we have now could keep up with the HVAC calls, but they are doing their very best. We do have some hotspots out there, like for example, Carver High School. The other day, the power pole that was struck sent a surge over here and did quite a number on the HVACs here. And that's, they've got it up and running, but we're fortunate, but it's going to be a major fix. We have Wilson Elementary that's got some issues that we've got on order and it's, these are big units that you just can't go pick up at the local supply store. I mean, they've got to be ordered and manufactured and brought in. So we're on schedule to get that taken care of. But yes, I mean, any AC stuff, if you guys hear of it, you can pass it on to Dr. Moore or feel free to shoot me an email with it. We'll get on top of it as quick as we can because we definitely want our kids and teachers to be comfortable in the classroom and help with that as well.
And one last question. You talked about transportation. What's our longest bus route as far as time to get from whatever points to the actual school?
We actually, you know, with some of the AAA and things that go on, we have a route that leaves out at 4:30 in the morning and they pick up at all different areas around the school to take kids. That's the one, one of them that goes down to Dunbar-Raimer and that's a long route. I mean, there's some of those routes that push a couple of hours on that. Yes, ma'am? Most routes are under 45 minutes though. And Mr. Thornton has created a hub schedule for the magnet schools so that they can be hubbed to more of a central location. So we don't, we're going to lessen the number of routes that those drivers have, which will shorten that time that they're on the buses. The magnet student parents will just have to bring their kids to a certain location instead of us picking up at every school around the district for that. Yes, ma'am?
And both are.
Right.
Yep.
So thank you, Gary. But one more thing, Chad, you can go now.
Okay.
One of the things we also talked about, this is again, case by case, school by school. It may be a case or a situation where a teacher actually thinks that the kids stay. That depends on the school, the subject of the, you know, so we can't expect everybody, but it could work in some places. So back to the cleaning and disinfecting if possible. And if it works at that school, then that's something else that we're talking, we're going to talk possibly, probably about considering that the kids are in there some type of patient and the teachers. And that's an old thing that used to be done, but not coming up. We might have different, like we've looked at students in the 1950s for a while because we would like to do all those creative things and be done for years. But hopefully it will just be short-term to get us to this and then go back to doing what we know is the best way to do it. Okay, so one last person I think is Dr. Williamson. She's going to talk a little bit about student services and how we discuss things that work with student services. And then I believe.
Good evening.
Good evening.
All right, across the Division of Student Services, we've been working in the various departments to be ready for the reopening of school, whether that is for children coming together or for us to be in a remote status. So for instance, in student support, we have already been thinking through what attendance will look like in both settings so that the district and families have the best options as far as being counted present and being able to take advantage of the instructional opportunities that we have. Some things, especially in student support, will not change. We still will continue to provide attendance assistance. Our DROs will continue to work with MPD when we need wellness checks with families or to do home visits with families if we are not having students and families log in in the platform on either side. So if a student is truant in a onsite status, we've also identified what truant would look like in a remote status so that we can still have that constancy of support within that department. One of the things that we have, one of the departments where we have worked most is in social services so that we can be sure that we're continuing to provide a constancy of support for children around their emotional needs as well as their behavioral needs. So we've been looking at the data for how that support looked when we had to rush out in the spring and then using that to improve and enhance what we're able to provide when children come back. So we have already been brainstorming about how, what are some other ways that we can capture children and capture families when they're not responding? We have already had partners come to the table to want to add additional services to what we already have. We have worked with partners across the city to identify how we can provide those counseling services in a platform that still honors the confidentiality piece that has to be in place. So we've already identified that platform. It's a free platform for the district and we'll be able to use it in lots of different ways. Across the behavior team, they've already been looking at how we can push modules out in a very responsive fashion to school teams when we have children that have discipline infractions or have bullying incidents. Because what we already know is even when we were out in the spring, kids are going to be kids and they're going to find ways sometimes to make a few bad choices. So we already have modules to be prepared to respond to those and pool children together in groups or work with children individually as needed. Nurse Rogers will speak to us on some other things this evening, but she has already pooled a task force of nurses and she's already been working with Mr. Anderson to make sure that we have the isolation rooms ready in the schools. All of those materials have been ordered. She has already been working with the task force on how we will manage taking those temperatures when children come to school because we know that it is going to be more than a one-person team to do that in order to accommodate the size for our schools. We, she has also done a pretty comprehensive assessment of all of the nurses stations across the district. And then in working with operations, wherever we needed to make changes so that they could be better in alignment with CDC guidelines, those pieces are already going. So we have been working throughout the division to try to be ready for kids coming back and meeting the needs of kids whether they are with us in person or with us remotely.
Thank you. I actually have a question, I'm sorry. Just one quick question. It's about the attendance piece. If, what if a parent is working and let's say they have an elementary child or maybe even middle school child and they want to work with them, maybe, well, they're not able to work with them and get them logged on during regular school hours but may log on maybe mid-school hours or later after work? How does attendance work for that population of people?
So one of the things that we've worked through, we do need to have a window of time when a child has to log in, but we're going to keep that piece as simple as we can so that even if a child is working in the evening in an alternate set, whomever is watching them, whomever is with them during that window of time, log in so that you can be counted present for the day. It will not require that the child stays in the platform in order to get their work completed. And we've been working with Mr. Mitchell's section to think through what that synchronous and asynchronous piece can look like so that we have the best benefit for children.
Okay.
Thank you. And so even sidebar, Chad and I and the group this morning, we talked about water fountains. I really wanted to turn all the water fountains on and shut them down so the kids don't go in and start sipping. And so we have to think about ways to get water hydration to the kids. So that's in the work, whether it works with bottled water or whatever. We're going to figure that out so that the kids can have water, but they won't be sipping out of the water fountains, you know, passing. Because they pass germs just when we don't have COVID.
Right, right.
So we don't need the water fountains.
Feature dishes.
So we're working on all of that. And I think as we have talked, different things may pop in your head. Feel free, send me the question. I'll do my best to answer it or I'll get someone else or maybe one of those things I'll say, you know, we haven't quite worked it out yet, but we will work it out. So, you know, if you think of something, it may be something we haven't thought about. We've thought about a lot of things, but, you know, send it to us and we'll see if we can figure out how we need to address it. Okay? So, Madam President, if you're ready to move on?
I am. I think we get to hear again from Mr. Anderson.
So one thing I want to say to the staff, I know a lot of you have things you have to report on tonight, but if you would be as brief as possible, because you've been here for a while, it's easy to hear what you have to say, but if you would please condense it where you can.
I'll get through very quickly the spreadsheet. If you have any questions, just answer those then. Rebecker Middle Roof, got a little bit of a holdup with the rain the last couple of weeks, but everybody moved along, 70% completed there. The Petercrom roof began July 8th. Seth Johnson's been opening for that roof is July 21st. The Union Street Elevator Project is July 21st, 23rd, put a bid there, open. JD HVAC replacement is 70% on the first phase. The second phase of that is the ninth grade building. And we've been working with the principal on that. We're going to have to swing classroom through the year in that ninth grade building for however many they can provide for so that we can complete that project there. They're working on setting that up in the main part of the building, but the main part will be completed. They gave us a target date of August 6th. I spoke to the principals today, the principal went on by there today and some of their informant and point him that they might be through a week earlier than that. So it's ready for that part of the big project and make the project. The Campbell Project is complete throughout the district. The Cisco phone project, we're still ironing out some issues of impact and McIntyre has to do with part of their servers and what's going on there and replacing some of that to make sure that works well. The intercom upgrades, which are at various schools, we're trying to get all of those IP-based. We're about 55% on that. And IP-based can give us some technology that will be great from a district level as far as safety and security. The police, we could allow the police, which we allow them in on our cameras now, where they can help us monitor certain things with their star-based, the things you see. They could do the same things with an IP-based intercom system and providing assistance if we ever had an active shooter or something going on in a building. The BTW side packets, that began today. He drove by there the last couple of days. There was a lot of dirt gravel, big dirt movers there. And they have a set date of, or excuse me, a tentative date the architect set for being that next week, the 24th. I sent that date to Dr. Moore here with you guys, but we're looking at a possible date for that. Love to get that done. I guess if we push the start date of school and we just virtual, but I'd love to do it before the school gets started so Dr. Stark won't be quite so busy with those, but have that set up. And then Fitzpatrick paving, they're going to start that. It's supposed to start today. They had some equipment trouble. They're going to be working on that towards the end of the week here, get that done. We'll follow up with the striping of it so we meet all the dead law requirements, but that was something we were able to get done very, very economically sound with that part of, had a question too. There's a couple of things that came along with this after I gave this update. Lanier auditorium HVAC, just hooked up an engineer before I got here. That would be going to the building commission here in a couple of weeks. And then we did it out, probably we're looking at a month and a half, two months before we get a contract for that HVAC job there. That will be a major renovation with that. And then we're also working on a consolidation heavily for taking 307 Decatur and Ellinger Hill into the main part of the Union Street side there. So that's working along and we've just got a lot of irons in the fire with that part of it. Vestabule project, we've got 11 of the schools, elementaries that we're looking at putting a security vestabule in. We're going to work that to all of our elementaries, the ones that don't have security for sure and need someplace to lock the public out. When you come into a building, you don't want them to have free access in there. We want to be able to bring them in, bring the public into the building, find out their intent and then let them go where they need to go. We've had several instances over the years where public get in there and start going down the hallway, carrying on doing things they shouldn't do. So that's one bit of safety and security that we're working on. That's what we charge with our plan and we look forward to what we're going to try to do to make our system better.
Thank you. Thank you. Okay. When Ms. Gillis and Ms. Rogers come up, I would hope that they can flow from anaphylaxis preparedness plan policy through naloxone use in school, I probably didn't pronounce that right, and pediatric palliative and end-of-life plan policies.
Good evening again. Real quickly, each of the policies that you'll hear, the first one that you got in your board packet did not have numbers on it, but these that you have received have numbers on it so you'll know exactly where it's placed in the policy book. All of the policies will fit under students. And the three that Dorothy Rogers will present will fit under students and then under wellness. So you'll see the numbers so that when we send it out, principals will know exactly where to place these in their hard copies and then we'll know how to organize it online. We did say that we would review the policy book annually. We would do it in December and we did. We met as a group and we included some outside folks and from the public as well. Then, of course, in May, we were supposed to meet again. We couldn't meet in person, but we did meet virtually by people sending in their needs. So the policies will be explained by the experts, Dorothy Rogers in this case, and then Kathleen Williamson will do the last one. So that's the last that you'll hear from me.
Good evening. I'm going to be very brief. Hopefully, I'm just going to explain, if y'all have any questions, what each of these are. I think the first one you have is anaphylaxis. As you all know, that's a life-threatening allergic reaction to something that you've ingested or come across and you've had an allergic reaction to it. It can affect many body systems. But with what we all know as EpiPens, epinephrine is, epinephrine is the, there's the emergency drug of choice to treat anaphylaxis. A lot of our students already have this ordered because they know, their doctors know that they're allergic to such and such. So we have those on hand at the school anyway for those students who have known allergies. We're talking about possibly stocking an epinephrine or two, quote, EpiPens or auto-injectors at each school for persons who would have an allergic reaction, that's an initial allergic reaction, who's never had an allergic reaction before. We could be there with this life-saving medication for them. And we would stock it along with where the AEDs are and things like that so that only people who knew how to use it and had been trained on it could get to it and know what to do. to do. There's three, there's three levels to the guidelines that the state put out. One is primary care, one is secondary, and then there's tertiary. I have a hard time with that word. We have, we have already put into place levels one and two. That's where we identify those students or people who we have in the building who have the known allergies. We have their medication in place, we've already done a care plan for them, that type thing. Level one is just educating students and staff on anaphylaxis. And then third, the third would be the actual stocking of the EpiPen or the auto-injectors. Any questions? Okay, with naloxone, that's kind of along the same lines as an EpiPen. Naloxone is given for opioid pain reliever-related overdose. And as y'all know, that kills thousands of people in the U.S. every year. Opioid overdose can either occur unintentionally, somebody takes something, they realize what they were taking, or they can intentionally take it. Naloxone is the generic name for Narcan, and y'all have probably heard Narcan on TV or in, you know, crime programs and stuff like that. That's when someone comes across with a body or a person who is unconscious and seems to have, you know, for the most part faded away, they can give them the Narcan and it kind of reverses the opioid overdose. And that, there again, that would be something that's stocked in the high schools only at this time, and it would be stocked along with the other emergency equipment at the school, such as the EpiPen and the AEDs. The last thing we're talking about is the palliative care for the end of life. Back in years past, students are, would not, could not, I mean, LEAs had the choice of accepting a do not resuscitate order and, what am I trying to say, actually honoring it. Back in 2018, a law was passed, it's called the Alex Hoover Act, to where a DNR order, do not resuscitate order, has to follow that person, and every entity or every agency where that person goes must by law honor that, that order. There are several phases of it. The parents or the proxy for that student has to be on board with it. The physician, it's actually two physicians are on board with it, and then we have to come together with a crisis team to actually provide that palliative care. And by that, if, I mean, I mean if somebody who, with a terminal illness started to go south or down, we wouldn't do any emergency procedures for that student. We would just provide, you know, comfort and care in a private, you know, area that we, that we could.
Okay. That all? Any questions?
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
So for most part, they do not resuscitate orders before I would surprise the president. Just your order here would surprise all of the subjects.
No. Yeah, we could already.
But then naloxone, then naloxone, they can't get that off of it.
No, it's all rejected, it's just not there.
All right. Ms. Gillis and Dr. Williamson.
Good evening again. I'm here to talk to you about Anna Lynn's Law. Anna Lynn's Law has been passed and is to be implemented in all school districts effective for this upcoming school year. Anna Lynn's Law pertains to how we handle a student that comes into the district that has been identified as a low-risk sex offender. So the process, so through Anna Lynn's Law, all of that process has been outlined from, the district will be notified by the juvenile court system, and technically it would be through M P D. When we have a student that is being released into the school system that has that status, they will notify the superintendent in writing. When we are aware of a student that is coming into the district that has that status, then we are, we as a district are responsible for developing a plan to ensure that student isn't, is in compliance with whatever edicts have been put out from the court system pertaining to their release, and we're required to put a plan in place to ensure that if by chance the victim is in the school where they are enrolled, that they are not coming in contact with each other. As a part of Anna Lynn's Law, there is a team that will be led by the principal in the school to develop an action plan, to identify everything pertaining to that student, from how that student will transition from classes, how that student will be involved in any activity, any school activities, from the time they hit the cap, from the time, really, they get on the bus to the time they leave our campus. We also have a requirement through Anna Lynn's Law, if the, if the student transitions from school to school, there, we have an obligation of notifying the receiving school that the child is coming. We notify M P D so that they can work with law enforcement to notify that school, and then we have the responsibility of passing the plan forward so that there is a continuity of support for that student. As with any other status for students, confidentiality is required, so only those who need to know would know about that child's status. And for children that are covered under various protections, I D E A 504, we would ensure that we are not violating their rights while we implement that plan.
Dr. Williamson, I got heartburn when I saw this, and I'm happy that you are explaining this, but I, I, I still feel just a little bit uncomfortable, but there will be close supervision with these type of students, right?
Yes, ma'am.
And, and people will be notified that they are in that environment.
The ones that need to know, yes, ma'am.
Well, will they, well, will they be given some type of rules or regulations prior to them coming? I mean, is there any way that we could say, you know, this might not be conducive for, in this particular setting? Do we have any kind of say-so about the procedures?
So that plan is a pretty detailed plan, and I've actually been working with one of our neighboring districts that had an incident prior to that. We do not have any students that we've been identi, that have been identified for us to plan on. However, one of our partner districts has. So I've been able to work with them, and they have a very extensive plan from how the details of who knows who's monitoring that child from the time they get on the bus, where they would have to sit on the bus, what activities they could participate in, extracurricular or otherwise, who is monitoring them as they transition from class to class, and that students, teachers are a part of that supervision team so that everyone, again, who comes in direct contact with that student and needs to know about that student's status is looped in and is a part of the cog to make sure that that student is monitored throughout the day while they are on our campus.
Thank you so much for explaining this, because in my 16 years here, we've never had this situation. So I'm glad we have something in place should we have a situation like this.
Yes, ma'am.
But we didn't know about it.
Or do we think about it, but now we're going to, we may do it this way.
Oh, okay.
This is one of those things you've always, you could be a problem, but you can be very careful about how it happens.
Right.
The foundation to this particular policy, need something, those need to know.
Need on a need-to-know basis kind of thing.
Let me ask you something, you're inappropriate, but you've given us definitions of things like, you know, twenty school students, but what is, what is low risk?
That's defined by the court system, that's defined by the juvenile courts. But, but you will see when you read further in there, that a child that's identified as low risk typically is a child that, based on all of their assessments, is not a child that will offend again. So that's how they define it.
And that is not something that we would necessarily, that was too. We would, if we were looking at the basic basis, be aware, but we would not come to make an account, not make an account for the student, is that, that the school would.
Okay.
And, and this is just a comment, what I read in here too, if the student transfers, that the transfer in school would be notified so they could put a team together.
Yes, ma'am.
I thought that was really good.
Yes, ma'am. Any other questions?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Watts, you've been waiting a long time.
Somebody's going to have to take a break.
I think he's going to talk on tonight.
You got, you got that right. Madam President, members of the board, Dr. Moore. First, the two salary schedules, first their salary schedule 22, this is a C and P nutritionist salary schedule. We did not have a nutritionist salary schedule in our salary sched, in all of our salary schedules. So what we did was, we knew we needed a nutritionist, we had had one for about a year now, a year and a half. And of course, this is funded out of C and P funds. We looked at some other districts' C and P salary schedule and developed a comparable salary schedule according with other districts, so that we will be able to hire a nutritionist, C and P nutritionist. The next one, the 12-month teacher salary schedule, schedule 59, this is indeed a salary schedule that we currently have. However, that salary schedule started at step 12. And the reason for that, this, this schedule was grandfathered in, we did have some teachers that was on step 12, but we traditionally do not hire 240-day teachers, or 12-month teachers. Now, the State Department, Alabama State Department of Education has borrowed some of our teachers, I think about eight or nine of our teachers, and they have requested that those teachers be on 240 days. Now, the State Department of Education are going to reimburse us for the salaries and benefits of those particular teachers, and those teachers will be working with our students. So we had to go back and develop our salary schedule for step one through nine, or one through 11, I should say, for, for those teachers who did not have at least 12 years of experience. Because again, this salary schedule already existed, however, all the teachers that was on, that was grandfathered in, they had worked beyond 12 years, but the teachers that the State Department has borrowed from us have fewer than 12 years, so we had to go and build a salary schedule for those teachers with fewer years.
Say we have nine of them, eight of those.
The last thing, as it relates to the financial statement, of course, it has all of the reports that we traditionally have, including explanation of financial data, which is a general overview by the CFO, snapshot analysis, just provide a quick snapshot of where we are, monthly budget percentages, of course, we are in the month of May, which is the eighth month of the fiscal year. Of course, we have the monthly compare of the statement of revenues and expenditures. This just provide us a listen of our revenues and expenditures and compare it to the prior year. Statement of cash flow, list the revenues and expenditures that flowed into the district as of the month of May. Then there's the pie chart, cash inflows and outflows, the combined, the combined financial statements, which is our balance sheet and income statement, and a definition of accounting terms. The point I just want to make, as it relates to the financial statement, is that last year at this time, our fund balance was, was at about $29.1 million. Currently, for the month of May, current, our fund balance is at $37 million. So that's about $8 million more than where we were last year at this same time. As you know, our fund balance requirement, one-month fund balance requirement by the state of Alabama is about $18.7 million. So we're well beyond that fund, that particular balance. Of course, only $37 million, some of that is already budgeted for the remaining months of this fiscal year, but we feel very, very, very confident that our fund balance will exceed what we had projected earlier when we first did the budget hearing for 2020. So we feel really, really good about that. Even though sales tax are down just a little bit, we do see where they're coming back up now, but we did reduce some of our operational expenditures as it relates to, to the, to the COVID. Of course, students were not in school, so we, we did decrease a lot of those utility expenditures and other operational expenditures. So we are doing really, really good right now. Again, we feel pretty good about our financial position, Madam President.
Okay. Was there anything else about the Alabama School Fiscal Accountability Act?
Yes, and that's one I wish I could skip, but Madam President, I'm sad to have to report to you that we did find another little incident, another incident where there were funds that was deposited, that a teacher had collected, and the money was deposited in this, in this teacher's personal account.
Oh, my Lord.
Yes. I will say to you that that teacher is no longer with us, and of course, the investigation is, is ongoing.
We thank you for all the things that you do to help us save money and find things that are going on, but I just wish it was somewhere we could do something besides letting them resign, you know.
Well, that.
I know that there's criminal charges and all of that, but when we lose money, like, but you, you've done a fine job, and I want you to know that, but I just wish it was something else we could do.
Right. I will just say that prosecutions and so forth on individuals are taking place, it's just there are certain things we just can't talk about at this particular time, but there are certain things that are taking place.
Okay, thank you.
Yes, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Watts.
Yes, ma'am.
Yes, hi.
I want to announce one good thing. I have British accent, but JD, Wild, the, the, you know, three of them, they did, they got stabilization.
Are they looking out? Are they looking out?
They're doing it.
Good. Okay, the next item on the agenda is one I'm going to talk about, which is the name change for Jeff Davis, Sidney Lanier, and Robert E. Lee. A lot of this is going to be redundant because we've had very eloquent speakers talk about this tonight, and I've received numerous letters, texts, phone calls, which I'm sure all of you have as well. There's no question that it's an emotional issue, and the messages that I have gotten have been extremely passionate in support and against changing the names of these schools. There've been petitions, protests, and of course, media coverage, which we welcome. However, it is critical that this body look beyond emotion and focus its work on making an informed decision. The reasons behind these names are well-known. They were intentionally chosen to repress black students and to stymie attempts to go to white schools. Robert E. Lee was named to undermine the U.S. Supreme Court ruling in Row, in Brown versus Board of Education. Jefferson Davis was built and named in protest of the forced integration that followed. And then there's Lanier, and as you know, I'm a graduate of Sidney Lanier, and I've tried to remain neutral, but I would be remiss if I did not admit to you that I had no idea Sidney Lanier was in the Confederate Army.
I didn't, I didn't realize that either. I don't know if I'm on the line.
Until.
I know.
Until, until four weeks ago, I didn't know that. I just thought he was a poet and a musician and who briefly lived and worked in Montgomery. I share all of this because I, I believe the reasons these schools are named what they are underscores why we need to explore making a change. While these names may have memorialized the Confederates for a different school in a different era with different students, it does not prohibit us from attempting to right this wrong. For 79.6% of students at Lee High School, 89.3% at Jeff Davis, and 97% at Lanier, we are sending a horrible mess. 89.3% at Jeff Davis, and 97% at Lanier, we are sending a horrible message. No student should be ashamed to attend a school because of its name. No student should be forced to keep alive the legacy of an individual who fought to preserve the right to keep their ancestors in bondage. Ladies, I'm asking you to join me in empowering a committee of students, alumni, and others to make recommendations to this board on how to rename these schools. However, while the burden of finding a new name may be in the hands of this committee, the burden of providing a quality education worthy of the name that's above on its door. And I've already stated earlier tonight that we have a great deal of work to do to this end. But I am suggesting that we change at least a couple of names of schools tonight, and I'd like to open it up for discussion.
I didn't hear the last statement that you made.
I wonder if the discussion needs to...
Oh.
Well, I'd like to kind of echo what Jana said. This is truly a historic...
Erica, can you take that off, just to, just, because it's hard to hear, hard to understand?
Okay. I want to echo what Jana said. It is truly a historic night. And although, and I'll just give a little history. I'm a history major and graduated with a history degree in American history, world history, and African-American studies. And I do understand, as I listen to the lady talk about, you know, how especially Sidney Lanier was revered, and that's very honorable. We're not the only school system that's ever removed that name from a building. There was a middle school who also carried that name, and it was removed during the time of the Confederate War, which was a war about slavery, and that cannot be denied, or enslavement of people. Mr. Lanier had a choice to participate in this war. In fact, there were other Southern guys who did not agree with it, who actually left and fought on the side of the Union. They didn't, I'm sure there were some poets and some musicians there as well, people who were very patriotic, but they were patriotic for the right reasons, and that was bringing America together. This war is symbolic, that war was symbolic of keeping enslaved African-Americans enslaved. Since I've moved to Montgomery, I've noticed that those remnants still linger. The statues are what I call the spider web. The spider is still crawling around, and it's in man's heart. It's in our policies, whether you're, at whatever level of government, all the way down to our local school systems. We should just do what's right. I like the point that Mr. Boyes made, that the demographics of this city has changed, and there are lingering scars. In fact, as I was thinking about Mr. Lanier, and I've read every email, it brought me back to Georgia Washington, how their school was stolen from MPS, started by slaves or a slave woman. It is now known as Pike Road High School, with Georgia Washington barely mentioned on the marquee. I actually went there to look at it myself, because I wanted to see what all had transpired. And it's almost like this lady's history does not even exist. That's not saying I'm trying to be tic-for-tac. But at some point, we've got to preserve and celebrate the history that African-Americans have contributed to this city, to this nation. And by that, I mean, they gave all of their free labor. It's no different than the Holocaust. There's no way anybody would want a Nazi statue around or a school named after a Nazi, whether he participated in it, played a flute in it, wrote a poem about it. They wouldn't want it. And I think that we in the city of Montgomery deserve the same type of consideration. And I'll just leave it at that. So I do, I will say this. I do hope that, you know, everybody's side had to be heard, and I learned some very interesting things. I think the young lady Shelton, last name was Shelton, I'm familiar with Shelton State Community College, and I thought about that when she said it. But, you know, if she can disconnect herself from that part of the legacy of her family, I think it's time for Montgomery to have the shackles of enslavement also removed from our schools. These schools were built, I'm sorry, these statues and buildings were named during Jim Crow, is when the Daughters of the Confederacy started collecting funds and putting them up. They were doing, and that was actually, I'm sorry, that was actually done after, 30, 25 to 30 years after the Emancipation Proclamation. When the schools were integrated, the school name changes came about, as well as the statues during that Jim Crow segregation time, as a reminder to African-Americans that you are still under our control. And if that was not the image that they wanted, then maybe they shouldn't have put the statues up. But I think we all know history well enough. I listened to you all talk about your graduating years, and some of you graduated during that time. I personally deny. I'm a child of full integration. So I, you know, I benefited from the coming together. But it's just too painful of a history to preserve. And let's enjoy them in museums. I take my children, I've always taken my children to the museums to look at the history, the good, the bad, and the ugly. And when someone said, "Well, he died," well, Edgar Eggers died, Martin Luther King died. They died for the right causes. This particular death was a death of keeping black people, Africans, in enslavement. And there's no other way you can look at it. And I'll digress from there.
Would you be able to understand me if I just pull it down just a little bit, then put it back up?
I put my...
Okay, excuse me. Not a problem. I too am a graduate of Sidney Lanier High. And I wondered, when the school was first named, why we would include Lanier, who was a poet. And of course, I had to do my homework as well. And when I spoke to some of my constituents about the fact that Lanier enlisted my readings in at 15, and when he was about 19, he still held to his conviction. But later in life, there was some concern as to whether or not I had made the right decision. So, you know, I was trying to give him a pass. The people I talked to said, "He doesn't get paid." Treason is treason. He was a traitor. He fought against the United States. So, you know, I have been on both sides of that argument. When we... My stand is, if the families of these people are telling us we're embarrassed by what has happened, it does not have a place, the recognition that we're giving it plays these in history books and museums, and let's move forward. I don't see why I would stand against what the families are asking us to do.
Thank you. Anybody else have any discussion further?
Are we fixing to vote? Is this our discussion before we vote, or? Okay, so if we're going to vote, I mean, it hadn't been brought to the floor. I was confused. Because it was in two places on the agenda.
Right, this was the discussion of it, and then we will get it to it.
The next one is we vote.
Okay. Then, I want to say a couple of things. I too am a graduate of Lanier, 1979. Nobody does it better. And I, my family went to Lanier, you know, we heard a lot of historical things about different, you know, all these family members that went to Lanier. I never knew that he served in the Confederacy until the last couple of months. I just always knew he was a poet. You heard the, "Hin is mightier than the sword." I mean, that was always our saying and everything. And I've heard more of Lanier, both recent grads, staff, faculty, and older grads, alumni, from Lanier. And it's been more in the favor of not changing the name, because most people did not know that. With Lee and Jeff Davis, I think it was different. Everybody knows what those two men stood for. And, you know, they fought, they did not fight for the United States of America. They fought in another country for things that were horrible. This is not easy for us, because we are voting for something historical, and that should have been talked about and voted on a long time ago. There was another school in Texas, around Austin, that was also named after Sidney Lanier in the 70s, and it was an all-white school. Just recently, they renamed the school, because now it is almost 100% Hispanic. And they renamed the, they renamed the school of an Hispanic Army veteran who was killed in Iraq by an IED, because that is a reflection of that neighborhood. And that is who those students look up to. It's one of them. And so while I have heard from a lot of constituents and a lot of people I went to school with, I'm still, you know, it's not an easy, it's not an easy thing to make these decisions. But Claire just read the percentages, and Lanier is more black than Lee or Jeff Davis. And when you think about that, regardless of my love for Lanier, for the people that, you know, I went to school with, it's hard for me to take that school in a different perspective after hearing everybody tonight. And this is kind of a little side note. I wanted to give a shout-out to a committee. I know many of you know that there was a law put into place in 2017, the Alabama Memorial Preservation Act, that went into effect to take the control out of local communities, local school boards, to rename streets, buildings, take down statues. And it was based on Confederate memorials and things that were named after Confederate soldiers or whatever. That law was really put into place, so that it would almost make it virtually impossible to change the names. It is meant, this law is now three years old, and there was no rules for it. You had to file a waiver, blah, blah, blah. So in case you didn't know, and I do want to go on record, for every name change, for every street change, for every monument that comes down, that entity that votes for that, and because it's school, this board has the authority to vote to make those changes, it's $25,000 that we have to pay to this memorial preservation, so they can preserve other monuments. So in changing the school names, it would be $25,000 per school. But I wanted to report tonight, Tabitha Isner, who many of you know, very big community activist. She is leading a committee that has been pretty quiet up until this point, because we were waiting to see what the vote would be tonight. But she just texted me, and as of now, we have raised $47,000, so that the school does not have to pay for those. And we believe that that will increase and cover the cost of those three fines, if we decide that Lanier is also going to be in that. And also with the rebranding, because we know that's going to be an expense to MPS as well, that we don't want the school to have to pay. So that was kind of a little side note, and I think we all just need to be in great prayer about this. This is not something that I have taken lightly, no, and I know nobody on this board has. That's all I've got to say.
Okay. Yes ma'am.
I know it's long, but I already said what I feel. I said it a little back. I'm not up here to say if it is, because I know it does. And I also said this to be compromised with that thing coming through the committee. When, I always felt I represent the wrong side. I'm not trying to do that. What I'm trying to show you is, we've got a rule that we weren't going to let 100 come in. If we didn't have 100 come in. And yet, we're standing here as a board, and we're going to spend $75,000 on changing a name of a rich school. And like I said, what we're trying to do is erase this thing. And that's not something that can be done. That is not even all right. That's why they have made laws like they have. I made the statement, history is not here for you to like, or me to like, or me to dislike. Either way, if you are offended by it, we learn from it, and we shouldn't be repeating history. So you've got to look at, some of you up here are like, "Oh, let's just pick Lanier." Well, you can pick Lanier, but you're forgetting all the people that graduated in 1962, in 1970, and all that, that graduated from Lee. I'm asking, I'm pleading. Let's put it, let's put the statues in a museum for history. It's sort of like the history thing that we have down, you know, for the slavery and all, because it's still a museum. At that point, do you at least, you know, over time, you keep the name Lee, you keep the name Jeff Davis, you keep, you know, Lanier, if we vote to keep it unclassified, I still feel the government's fault. But you make them accurate, like Lee. They did this in Texas. And you make Lee, like, leadership, excellence in education. It's a win-win for everyone. You have all the graduates that keep Lee and JD, but it's no longer Robert E. Lee. And so that's, if it's in the name, and honestly, if we're going to change, you know, there are some options. If that's what we're going to do, New York, A and, New York 1, New York 2, New York 3. We could give them New York 1 all the way through to New York 54. Or we could make it A and Street, or, you know, Delaware Street, whatever. If we're going to change, we could fill this building, we could... And to me, for us as a board, to try to take history which we learned from, I feel, and I look at it, it's not ours to make actions. We learned from it. They're there. And if you look at some of the things that I've sent you that have been ignored, you can look at Huntsville, Mobile, Birmingham. They had the same thing happen. They went through the committees, they went through all this, and each time, each time, the Supreme Court overturned. We may have an attorney general that says that, "Hey, we're not going to do this." We have a government that in 2017 said we couldn't change this. Now, we can look at each, each person in government, hey, they're right, they're wrong. But if we compromise as a board, it shows togetherness and unity, no matter who we are, no matter what race we are, no matter what gender we are. We should compromise.
I want to say one thing, because you pointed out something that made me think of something. And that is that those who graduated from Lee are still Lee graduates. And you can't take away from anybody the experience they had in high school. But to have a visible, when you have a visible monument to someone who did repress people, it's a constant reminder, and I think it's not a good thing. I think that people see that, and who, somebody spoke tonight that said they graduated from whatever, 262 A and Street? whatever, 262 A and Street?
But Claire, if you're going to take, Lee, you don't want to back up, because it can do, it's going to be back up.
Well, we will make a decision tonight on whether there will be, if there's another, if there's a name change, for sure, that won't go back up, okay? And we actually have a, something from the, because I fear if you put him back up, he would be yanked back down again. But it would be, the Attorney General has said that it does not have to go up without penalty.
But what I'm saying is, y'all here, most of you, some of y'all want to graduate from Lee. You've got several people here, including board members, that represent Lee. It's easy to pick that. But it's no different than people that, that may be on the board, that named a building after their late brother, or late sister. It's no different. What if somebody came to you 20 years later and said, "I want that building taken, because your brother did one thing wrong."
Well, one thing wrong is not, one thing wrong is not the same thing as being the Confederate president who, who spent his time, he was in the US Senate, I believe, and he traded that, as a traitor came to here, and wanted to keep slavery as the norm. And I think that's, there's a whole lot difference than doing one thing wrong, and being someone who represented the government, and someone who represented the Army. Now, I'm going to, I'm going to give you just my little thing on Lanier. Again, I never knew that the man was even in the Confederacy. And there's a long history here, since 1910, of that, that I don't think was founded in hate. I think when Lee was named, it was a thumb of the nose to the Board of Educat-, the lawsuit. And I think when Jeff Davis was named, it certainly was, because integration was, was ongoing. And that's a terrible thing, to ask a black child to go to a school named Jefferson Davis.
Well, you know, Lisa, Lisa, listen.
Where is, where, why are we?
Well, that's up to, that will be up to somebody else to decide.
Lisa, acronyms, you know, these schools have been here for years, for years and years. And, you know, you say it's just an acronym, but I met my great-grandmother, who was a As a little girl, she died at 106. As a little girl, I would sit at her feet, and she would tell me stories. She would, she would just tell us stories, and I was listening, and I didn't understand then, the stories that she was telling about the abuse and the hard work. When you see the pictures on TV, you see the happy slaves running around. That didn't happen. It was abuse, it was hurt. She was abused, and she watched her family members be abused, and she talked about it, and she told us how it was. That pain is deep. But also in that, she taught us to love one another, and she taught us not to become what you're trying to fight. Just because they give hate, you don't give hate. But it's certainly offensive, it's disrespectful. To our family, the blood, sweat, and tears that black people poured into this country is negated. It's looked at as nothing. But we, black people, and indigenous people, people, all, people from all other countries, not just blacks, but everybody, we are supposed to be a country, a melting pot of people not being offended, offensive to other peoples, and we have to respect one another. And these names are totally disrespectful. That's history, yes. You know, as I've always said, you wouldn't ask a Jewish person to graduate from Hitler High. It's offensive. You wouldn't ask a person that's been abused by that tyranny. We can look at them and say that's tyranny, but we're not looking in the mirror. We need to look at the man in the mirror, in the United States of America. We need to look and see who we are, repent and move forward. This hurts. It hurts. Our black children should not have to walk into Robert E. Lee, or Jefferson Davis. I was against it when I graduated from Carver, from this school, in 1970. And they opened up the new high school, I say, "Oh, that's wonderful." Then they named it Jefferson Davis High School. A slap in the face to black people, telling you, "Oh, if you come here, you're going to have to carry the name of the Confederate president." A traitor to this country. We've endured it for years, the season is over. We must move forward, but we must move forward together, and in unity, respecting one another. Madam President, we need to move on.
Okay. Any other discussion? If not, we would move on to the consent agenda, which would include items B through I, and that's for Dr. Moore to give us a recommendation.
Madam President, I move that we accept the superintendent's recommendation, removing item A from under consent agenda, and approving item numbers B through I.
Second. Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising a hand. Okay, Joanna?
Oh, sorry.
Okay. Thank you. That is unanimous and passes. And then, Dr. Moore, can we make number A the first one?
So we're going to move to, I am not considering the separating for approval, but we're going to use one individually in both of the committees. So we're going to move item A on page 8, which is, which is the resolution, and I'm going to recommend approval of the resolution on for a special election for the levy of an 18.5 mill school tax, in the Montgomery School Tax District and Montgomery County.
Madam President?
I move to accept the superintendent's recommendation, that we move forward with the resolution calling for a special election for the levy of an 18.5 mill school tax in the Montgomery School Tax District and Montgomery County.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, signify with a raising of hand. Those opposed? Six to one, that passes.
We need to protect our students.
All right, Dr. Moore?
Can you tell them, but we don't bid to swing 23.
Okay.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the superintendent's recommendation for a personnel report, certified personnel.
I second. Any discussion? Please signify yea by raising of hands, and opposed. We have six to one, movement that passes. Dr. Moore?
Right, under this one, I want you to move item S13 on the classified.
Madam President, I move that we adopt the superintendent's recommendation, personnel report, classified personnel.
Madam President?
Eliminate what? S?
I second.
S13, with the elimination of S13.
I second.
Any discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand. That's unanimous and passes. Dr. Moore?
Madam President, I would like to make a motion to support the superintendent's recommendation for a name change for Jefferson Davis High School.
Second.
Is there any other discussion? All in favor, signify by raising your hand. Those opposed? Six to one, that motion passes. Dr. Moore?
Madam President, I would like to make a motion for a name change for R.E. Lee High School.
Second.
Any other discussion? All in favor, please signify by raising your hand, and opposed. Motion carries, six to one. Dr. Moore?
Madam President, I would like to make a motion for a name change for Sidney Lanier High School.
Madam President?
I move that we receive the superintendent's recommendation for the name change for Sidney Lanier High School.
I second.
Okay, any other discussion? Those in favor, please signify by raising your hand. There's five, and opposed, there's two. That motion carries. And ladies and gentlemen, our next meeting is August the 11th, and I hope it won't be quite so long. This meeting is now adjourned.
Turn your mics off, turn them mics off.
Madam President?